Good morning again, caller meeting in order. Today's Tuesday, August 26th, nine o'clock in the morning, at the Public Works Building, for our regular meeting. We're going to do the invitation called by pleasure legion. It stands to be.
Let me pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we are so grateful for this beautiful day that you have given us. We are so grateful, Father, that we are able to be here at this beautiful beach, Father. I just pray in Jesus' name that your hand be upon the council today. Thank you, Lord, for their leadership. And I just pray in Jesus' name that your hand be upon them and lead and guide them in the best interest for the city, Father God. Thank you, Lord, for leading and guiding them as always. And thank you for our nation. And thank you, Lord, for the many blessings that you have given us. And thank you for giving us strength, Father. And I thank you, Father, as always, that may the word of our mouth and the meditation of our heart always be acceptable to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, we're going to open our meeting this morning with, uh, the first thing on the agenda is beach vendor application. Since I've beach rungs, I'm sure the council's already reviewed it. Melanie, comments on it?
The beach vendor application has been received, it has been reviewed by me and our staff. It does complete everything that's required. The only thing left is to get a final approval by the city council.
Everybody reviewed it? You said we bring them to the council and review them, and then just guarantee okay? So currently, that's going to be on you to load up, guarantee okay?
Yes, sir.
Good deal. Everybody okay?
Yes.
All right, reviewed? All right, the next thing on the agenda is ordinance six, or eight sixty-five shark fishing. Before we get started, I'm going to tell you that we're not going to have a reading for the first reading. We don't accept the ordinance right now. We're going to open it up to discussion, try to get some input from the public, and then also open it to the table. I think one of the things I want to clarify is, I don't think there was ever a appetite to completely a hundred percent ban shark fishing on Mexico Beach. I believe that there was a conversation about would we issue license, business licenses to operate off our beach? And that was the conversation. Banning was not part of that. So with that said, I want to open up the, uh, to the public, allow them to have some input, and then we'll close that and we'll move to the table. So, the podium's open. Say comments.
Good morning. My name is Jacob Yawn, I'm from Blountstown, Florida. I've been coming to Mexico Beach for twenty-plus years. Um, I love this beach. First of all, I just want to say I appreciate y'all. I know what y'all do is extremely hard and difficult, so I thank y'all for being here and thank y'all for what you do. Um, I had a whole thing written up here, but I guess I'll just run away from that. I thank you guys, I know what you just said, but the original meeting where this started, that really didn't seem like the case. It wasn't just about licenses. It was about banning the equipment. Um, you start talking about leaders and hooks and banning shark fishing on the beach, which I think is a very dangerous precedent to set as an outdoorsman, as someone who enjoys this beach, as someone who advocates for outdoorsmen all across the country. Um, I fought against public land sales, I fought against, um, oil dredging in our rivers and in our bays, things like that. I think that was a really dangerous thing to start talking about. The business licenses, that's a whole different topic. I don't know the ins and outs of that. But I really think you guys started to get into some legality issues with talking about banning what someone is able to do in state-owned waters below the high tide line with the amendment that I know you guys know that we just passed to our state of Florida constitution, the right to hunt and fish. I think you guys got in some really murky waters there. One of these guys I know will talk about it. Mexico Beach has tried to do this before, and one of these guys will supply a letter from the Attorney General at the time saying you can't do this. So, I'm glad to hear that now the conversation's changed to just the business license aspect. Um, so, I'm glad to hear that, but we got in some real murky waters there, so I think that was a huge mistake. I'm glad to hear there's kind of a backpedal a little bit. Um, now I'll let some of these guys carry on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is for you guys, this is a copy of the Attorney General letter from nineteen eighty-four when the city of Mexico Beach previously attempted, Spencer, Spencer Wonder, Terriff from a tackle, live in Milton, Florida, used the beaches all along the Panhandle, all the way down to the east coast and abroad. Um, I run the largest land-based fishing tackle company on the planet, and it is in my best interest to preserve shark fishing on as many coasts, as much of the coastline as possible. This letter here is from nineteen eighty-four when the city of Mexico Beach previously attempted to ban shark fishing from the state, or from its municipal lands in state of Florida. State of Florida's Attorney General at the time said, "You do not have the authority to do that." Signed it a code, that code hasn't changed, therefore it stands. Uh, in addition, just last year Marco Island had a similar ordinance on the books, and the state of Florida overturned that for them as well. If any attempt, I'll reiterate what I said last week, any attempt to move to restrict access to the public trust lands in the state of, uh, the city of Mexico Beach will be met with legal issues on behalf of me and my trust. Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Andy Bolger, Weewill Hitsco, Florida. Now, I will take into account what you guys did just say about it, um, not being a all-out ban, but when you read the agenda there, it does not mention anything about it not being all-out banned. It basically says, um... Yes, sorry, it says in, uh, amendment, in ordinance to ban shark fishing from the beach. I mean, it does not say anything about beach vendor permits or anything along those lines. Uh, now, with that being said, we do have a petition online, I'm sure you all have seen it, I've emailed it to everybody as well this morning. We currently have over three thousand three hundred and twenty-one signatures against this ban of shark fishing from the beach. Um, just like Spencer has said, we agree, a lot of people believe that it is against our constitutional rights. For one, you're going to get into some, uh, some muddy, murky waters. But I guess we'll at this point wait to see what other folks have to say and what the council comes up with on that next proposal, before we get too much further into it, but, um, I do not believe it is within the best interest of the city. We receive tons of messages that people have vacationed in town ten, fifteen, twenty years, "We love shark fishing, we come to Mexico Beach just to sharkfish every year." If they pass this ban, we will not be coming to Shark, uh, Mexico Beach anymore. I can show you guys those messages, send them to you, email them, do whatever you guys would like with those. But I think your, um, opposition to this will be a lot greater than you guys believe. Thank you.
What was your name again?
Andy Bolger, Weewill Hitsco, Florida.
Thank you.
Here we go.
Good morning, guys. I'm, uh, PK Jones, I'm for F W C, Florida. Um, I was actually just coming here to go scalping today, and I heard this was going on, and kind of, I appreciate you guys, uh, just from what I've heard, prayer and all that. Uh, appreciate all the, everything that I've read from you guys and what I just heard, all that was amazing. I'm just letting y'all know what I've experienced from my neck of the woods. Going on as far as the business licenses go, I understand where y'all are coming from and everything like that, but just coming from like boots on the ground, what has happened to me, I don't have a business, I don't run a charter or anything like that, but I take my friends, when they're down on vacation with their kids and everything like that, they come down and go fishing with me, and I'm already made to feel uncomfortable fishing on beaches where I am, have every right to go fishing. I get away from people, I'm very respectful, people walk up to me, and they feel like they have a right to harass me, because, for no reason, and that's neither here nor there, but now they're talking about business licenses over there. And I'm now picturing where I'm hanging out and just fishing with my buddies and their kids and everything like that, and then I have somebody coming up and harassing me and asking me about a business license, and turning the day sour. That's already happened with people, they're mistaken and thinking that like I can't fish on the beach just because they own a piece of property about a hundred yards that way. And I, I'm exhausted of having these conversations with these people, I'm very, and I just feel like this is going to lead to further and further confusion and sour conversations, and I feel like the people, I don't know, eventually it's going to get to a situation where these people that are arguing and yelling and stuff like that, they have a little bit more influence and money than some of us, and I feel like this is just going to be a slippery, slippery slope. Like, I'm, uh, down for some sensible regulation and everything like that, but there's got to be some sort of, just the checks and balances have got to be there, is all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, folks. My name's Ted Sparling, I live in Port St. Joe. Um, I have a, more of a unique perspective on all this. Um, I've lived over Florida, primarily up here in Panhandle and southwest Florida. Used to fish off the beach here when I was a young teenager, sharkfish, fish. We would canoe the baits out. Now they use kayaks and drones and things like that. So there's some technology issues I can understand y'all being concerned with, but, you know, I look at what's driving this here and elsewhere, and it's always fear, I mean, and where somebody thinks it's not in my backyard, kind of mentality, which we see a lot now. Um, and it's just sad, but just to give you a perspective, um, I was fortunate enough as a young man to be able to live here, uh, most of the time, and live in southwest Florida most of the time. And I grew up on a beach down there where, when we were young, we could drive on the beach, have fires on the beach, fish on the beach, sail our boats on the beach, do everything for the beach. You go to that same beach today, you can sit in your lawn chair and play with your phone, but that's about it. You can stare at the water, you can watch the sunset, and anything else is pretty much against the law. So, when I heard about this proposed ordinance, I won't get into the legality, which we've already discussed, and which may or may not happen, but the fact of it is, is you're just going down a path of taking away your culture and your identity as a coastal town. When I was a young man, I used to take my vacations here when I was working and living in southwest Florida, just to get away from all that. And, you know, particularly after Hurricane Michael, we've seen, uh, one hell of a lot of changes take place here, and there are a lot of people coming in, and what comes with that is people that want to come down here and enjoy everything they talk about on social media, about how great it is, oh, look at the beautiful water, this is paradise, and then two weeks later, they want to start changing it, just like where they came from. And that's where this kind of stuff goes. So, um, and if that's where this city takes itself, um, then there's nothing, you know, we can really do about it. I mean, change is inevitable, but, uh, I'm just here to voice the fact that if you, if you don't be really careful here with these kind of ordinances and these changes, they lean down a slope with some of these other gentlemen I've alluded to, where there's just no coming back from, because the next guy that's got your role is not going to go back and say, "Well, let's change all these things that somebody else has been doing over the last twenty years," because that's just not how it works. I mean, you start passing laws, and, uh, in particular a complicated ordinance like I read, me and my wife were reading this thing last night, I'm like, "Who's going to enforce this?" You know, wire leader, hook sizes, this, that, I mean, it's ridiculous. The cops here already have a big enough time dealing with, uh, uh, these other issues we have with all this growth, they don't need to be enforcing fishing laws, things like that, that's something for F W C. But, anyway, just wanted to voice that opinion, give you guys some perspective. Um, this is, this is the last of Florida, this whole area, and, uh, I'm an outdoorsman, enjoy it every day. You know, if, another one more small point, if sharks are the issue, um, that's a whole different discussion. Uh, me and some other folks here, we, we, I spend all my days offshore that I can, and we're usually spearfishing. We deal with sharks every time we drop in the water, and it's far worse now than it's ever been. And that's a whole nother, uh, biological issue, but, um, you know, the shark fishing isn't going to, banning shark fishing isn't going to change that. It's not going to make things safer for people in the water. Uh, I know it's a conceived, uh, preconceived notion, but it just isn't. I mean, we've learned how to deal with the sharks underwater, there's things you can do, uh, but I hope this isn't being driven by fear, because if it is, it's, it's just not, it's, it's unfounded. But, anyway, appreciate your time, thanks for your, your continuing guidance in this matter.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm too nervous to speak, so I'll have to read, if that's okay?
Read your, just told your name and, and address.
My name is Regina Capps. My address is five ninety Borders Road, Weewill Hitsco. But I lived in Mexico Beach, built a house in Mexico Beach, been here since nineteen eighty-five.
Thank you.
I'm a teacher, so, here we go. The local people here have long enjoyed and treasured our area from Lake Limaco to the Appalachia Colon Brothers River, to the Cape, to Mexico Beach, to Crooked Island, Sound, and all points in between. We know how precious and rare our culture is here. Families have gathered on these beaches since about nineteen hundred, which is over a century ago. And over all these years, we made it work, easily, because one of the cardinal rules of the South is to mind your own business. To think people can move into a community like ours and then change our lifestyle to fit theirs is unfair, even though it's already happening right before our eyes. With regard to shark fishing, it's not new at all to the area. We've been doing it humanely and without incident, as I've said, for decades, and what we have not been doing is shark fishing for money. It's always been an activity enjoyed by locals for the, uh, most part. You know, you see where I am. Uh, family and friends, and in my case, a chance to reunite with former students of mine as well for fellowship. If we caught sharks, fine, if not, fine. The biggest advertisement of what we were doing now comes from the throngs of tourists who flock to us in order to video us and plaster us on YouTube, where I assure you, most of the locals don't want to be. I'm just recently learning about the proposal to prohibit, uh, shark fishing, and I'm struggling to understand why it's a problem now and it never has been. If it's because there are people who think that dropping a bait four hundred yards offshore will draw sharks to the beach to attack swimmers, my suggestion would be to educate yourself. Enlighten yourselves as to what rules already exist, you can't chum now, there's already a rule that says you can't chum. Um, and how many people have been bitten because someone has a line out? I've already been to one of these meetings at the college with F W C, and the very first line they opened the forum with was that there is absolutely no data or no incident that, uh, where someone got attacked because somebody else was fishing for a shark four hundred yards offshore. We locals, for the most part, have long ago given up our weekends and our holidays on our beaches. They've been overtaken by new crowds, and it seems to me that these new crowds must have never known true freedom, true elbow room and space, even true personal space. These new crowds seem to think we need a rule for everything, when for years, simple respect of our home was enough. Believe it or not, there are still some of us who haven't benefited from the money these new crowds crow about bringing into our area. There are still some of us who couldn't care less, because money's not what we value the most. We value our home, we value our freedom, we value our culture, and we want our grandchildren to have what our children had, which is what has brought so many people here in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Yes, sir.
My name's Colton Smith, from Upper Florida. This is nervous sitting up here, I'm sorry. Y'all done awesome job, too, stepping up. This is, this ain't easy, getting in front of a crowd, you know, they, they actually teach this, this is actually a college forum, you know, they have to do this job, you know, this is, y'all were amazing when they were saying this, and, you know, I'm shaking, I'm like, like a long-term cat in a room full of rocking chairs, and my grandpa would say...
You're good to go, Mr. Steak, your job.
All right, all right. I know that we could sit here and, we could easily try our motions all day long, tell you why we love it, you know, but, as I was looking and researching and calling and asking for help and seeing what kind of rights and stuff they could have, everybody wanted to charge me to do something that they was going to do anyway, so I figured might as well read it myself. So as I was reading, the, the Florida statute three seventy-nine, section twenty-three fifty-one, I come across the land-based commercial and recreational fishing activities legislates as findings, purpose definitions, legal protections, and ordinance prohibition activity. And through this whole thing, it, it empowers us. Do I need to read it?
If you'd like, yes, sir.
Okay. The legislative findings and purposes. The legislature finds that commercial and recreational fishing constitute activities of statewide importance, and that the const, or, uh, sorry, and the continuation of commercial and recreational fishing will benefit the health and welfare of the people of this state. The legislature further finds that commercial and recreational fishing operations conducted in developing and urbanizing areas are potential, or potentially subject to curtailment, which means to restrict or eliminate. All right, let me find it, it'll be reading. As a result of local government zoning and nuisance ordinances which may unreasonably force the closure or productive purpose of this act to prevent the curtailment or abolishment of commercial and recreational fishing operations solely because the area in which they are located has changed in character, or the operations of this are displeasing to the neighboring residents. So, all I can ask is, this, we have stuff already in effect, we have huge guidelines that F W C already put on us, and we here in this room are here now because we know the laws, we fight for the laws, and we respect the laws. And none of us here want anybody messing that up. That's why we're here, because we want to fight for it. So, I just want to thank y'all, and I appreciate it, and y'all have a good one.
Good job, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Buddy Cooper, a lifelong resident of, uh, Weewill Hitsco, Gulf County, appreciate the time, y'all. You know, we're here. About two weeks ago, I went to that meeting in Avanna about the bears, that proposed bear hunting, you know, and opposition got up there and they had these great arguments, emotional, passionate, the only problem was, it wasn't true. That's just like these, shark fishing being dangerous and dangerous to the society and all that. It sounds good, but it's not true. And anytime that you want to have an argument about something, you bring up safety or environmental. It's hard to argue with that. That's what we're doing here, is arguing. Yeah, it can be dangerous to somebody sharkfishing, they take that chance. I love hog hunting with dogs, it can be dangerous to me, I take that chance, it's not going to affect anybody else, just like shark fishing won't, that won't affect anybody else. And just because somebody don't like it, they come down here, they don't like it, "Oh, we need to stop that, because I don't like it, it bothers me." There's no basis. Like, I've lived in Gulf County my whole life, every year, we got people coming down to the, coming down to the beach for on vacation. They go out there, and they see us ride down the beach, back our truck up to the water, get our drills out, get our fishing poles out. That freedom bothers them, because we can drive on the beach, because nowhere else can you drive on the beach, it bothers them. So they go back, and, I don't know why you're going to drive on the beach. You run over a turtle mesh, you run over, no, we got more turtles we ever had. There's no basis for it. So what we tell them, get back on seventy-one or ninety-eight and don't come back. Because the people we want to come here appreciate our freedom, appreciate our traditions, our way of life, just like these people that want to sharkfish. You need to look out for those people, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elaine Hardwick, and I wasn't going to speak today, but, um, I live in Mexico Beach, and one of my favorite things is to watch the shark fishermen. Um, I enjoy it. My question is, that's why I moved here, and that's why I live where the old pier used to be, because the favorite thing to do is go out on the pier and watch them pull in sharks. So my question for the council is, if you're going to discuss shark fishing, what's the impact going to be for the future pier? Because that, that was like an all-time favorite. So, please consider that, the impact that it's going to have. But I do enjoy it, it's great, thank you, guys.
Glenn McCowen, Youngstown, Florida. I know a lot of people are talking about the recreational side of things. Uh, this has been my first year of actually running charters, not independently. Um, there is a pot, a lot of positive into the charter side of things, even though I know there's a lot of disagreements on it, I get it. Um, but what I see when I'm out there is a lot of people that are uneducated on how to sharkfish. They want to catch a shark, but they're uneducated to do it. They pay people, like myself, um, and others, um, to do it the proper safest way. Um, I know there was a conversation about the gear that we use and everything else, I get it. Um, a lot of that gear is actually bought and purchased by us because, um, it's not so much to try to go after the big, great sharks that everybody knows that we all have. Um, it's actually in case the factor of we catching one, we have the proper gear to get it in, release it quickly, and for the better good of the shark itself. Um, it just comes with the pros of, hey, I caught a big shark, but it, the main factor is, is that, is to get that shark in, get it out as quick as possible. I have educated so many people on the beach, whether it be our clients, whether it be people that are walking down the beach, uh, they want to get into it, and first thing I always tell them is, is that, you know, it's easy to get a shark on, reel the shark, the hardest part is to dehook and release as quick as possible. Um, that's, reassures them that they pay someone that knows how to professionally do it, and pulls them out of safety, uh, you know, harm's way of, of everything. Um, another thing is too with it, is I've actually been out there, I've detoured a lot of people from actually doing it themselves. Not because I want to make money or nothing like that, they don't know the, the stuff that's got to go into it, the, the money that's got to go into the actual real gear to do it, and everything else. Most of the stuff, like I said, the gear that y'all were mentioning in that last meeting, um, these are all stuff that we're all, every single one of us that are doing this, um, that we're going off what F W C, you know, recommends. And actually, you can't even use anything under eighty-pound braid to fit sharkfish. Uh, most of your spinning reels can't hold that many yards of eighty-pound braid. That's why you see the bigger reels, because they can hold that. If you get a hammerhead on, which we all don't want to catch, I know that might be a surprise to you, we got to have the reels to be able to stop them, because if not, you're going to have a hammerhead that's probably carrying out five, six hundred yards of line, get snagged up on a rock, get snagged up on anything, and that, we have to have the gear just for that factor. It's not to go after the huge sharks, it is the fact that we need to stop them, get them in, dehook them, get them back out there safe as possible. Um, so there is a lot of pros, it's just like, can y'all imagine if people got out on seventeen-foot Key West boats, went out five miles offshore, never, never been offshore before, tried... never, never been offshore before, tried to mangrove fish or red snapper fish? Yet, you would have Coast Guard having to go out there and help them out because they've got stuck out there or whatever, because they're not knowledgeable how to do it. It's the same concept, they have to, they pay people to take them out to, to catch red snapper and stuff like that, because it's the safest way. It costs y'all less money in case y'all have to send, you know, first responders out there to deal with it, and everything else. It's the same concept, people wanna shark fish, that's why they come here, it's the state of Florida. We are the fishing capital of the world, and the best way for our visitors to do this would be in the safest way of having charters take out. Now, I would rather shark fish, you know, and have my rights to shark fish over being able to run a charter. That, the, the money is just so we can take people out. I don't, we don't make profits off that. It's to be able to take the next group out. Cause it, buy baits, buy tackle, all this stuff, costs a lot of money. So, I, if, if I had to pick and choose, I would definitely do this more recreational than I would charter, the charter side of everything. Um, I just feel good about myself when I'm out there and I'm educating people. I'm telling them the right ways to do it or the wrong ways, and then, obviously, I like to be able to, not to tour, detour them from doing it, but doing it the right way. And that happens a lot here with a lot of vacationers. Um, and a lot of them doing what they're doing, and we educate people, and they're, and they're good to go. So, y'all can choose what y'all wanna do with that, that's totally fine. I mean, most of us are insured, most of us are more willing to pay the, the permits and everything else. And at least y'all can keep track of who's got the permits in case they do X amount, you know, whatever they do. Y'all can go, hey, well, this was such and such, we're gonna deny their permits. You know, that's it, they're done. Not in Mexico Beach anymore for that, for that group. It, it's, it's, there's a lot of positives in the, in the charters, and I, I've heard a lot of negatives, uh, in the last few meetings. There's a lot of positives, and that's all I just wanted to say about the matter. Alright? Thank you.
I have a question for him.
Go ahead. Go ahead, have a seat, sir.
Okay, I thought she didn't make it to the question.
Yeah, we'll get y'all when they come to the table. Any other comments? From the audience? I'm gonna close it, go ahead and close it, bring it to the table, Eric, you have a question?
Yeah, a question, is it Mr. Hall?
No, it's McCowen.
Mr. McCowen, uh, just a quick question. Do you, are your charters onshore or offshore?
It's onshore.
Okay. And, uh, are your shark fishing charters, uh, onshore? Are they during the day, or are they?
Absolutely not, they're, they're at night. Our charters start at seven, uh, seven PM at night, and we actually, sometimes we have to prolong that because of the beachgoers and everything, cause we do wait for them beaches to clear out before we do that. So, that is, that's how our trips are ran from seven PM, and sometimes we have to go to eight, depending on the beach crowds.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there still at the table, any other comments?
I have a few questions, or a few. Um, the first is I just wanna reiterate how we got here. We had a commercial charter outfit person come to the beach and, and started doing this for hire. That's how we got here. We have strict ordinances in our books as far as vending on the beach. So just so everybody knows how we got here. Um, we did talk at a few meetings about, should we put, after this came up, I think we took care of the commercial side of it. But did we wanna have some regulations on shark fishing in general? You know, one of my, you know, was it, do we have it at night? You know, cause that's when the majority of shark fishing is done. So things came out, I heard a few things about, um, what type of gear or whatnot. So, that was kind of what I got from the conversations at this table. And, and then last but foremost, I, I wanna know, I wanna ask the table, or, because this thing was written and it was passed out. And I understand everybody's read it. But we clearly did put in here shark fishing from city-owned beaches and canals is prohibited. I'm just kind of trying to figure out where that came from.
I'm the same way.
Well, let's just, just real quick, then, let's get an answer to that. The attorney was asked to, to put something together.
Yeah.
That did not mean that that's what we were gonna go with, that was the starting point. Is that correct?
That's correct. And, and just to clarify if I could, Mayor, the, the Attorney General opinion that, uh, the gentleman alluded to, uh, was an opinion back in nineteen eighty-two relative to the fact that Mexico Beach was asking about the, below the mean high water line. And that whole opinion referenced fishing below the mean high water line. That's not what you all had been talking about. I also wanna say that there is a statute that, that, um, is very short, and it, it, it's two sentences. The power to regulate the taking or possession of saltwater fish is defined in section three seventy-nine point one oh one as expressly reserved to the state, second sentence, which is the important sentence. This section does not prohibit a local government from prohibiting, for reasons of protecting, for, uh, public health, safety, and welfare, saltwater fishing from real property owned by that local government. So, that ordinance that I drafted was tailored to match the statute, and it ref- referenced the property that is owned by the city.
So, just to finish on that, must, um, so we clearly, or not we, uh, from what I gather, we, the commercial side of it, we, we do not, from what I gather, do not want. And it's regulated through other ordinances. After that, it's kind of up to the table. You know, I, I don't want to ban shark fishing, or ban any kind of fishing from our beaches or anything like that. You know, it's up to us to talk about it, and do we wanna put a few regulations? We didn't have a, a thought about this over the last few weeks since all this came up. Because you can overregulate and do things, you know, I don't wanna call them knee jerks, but we never had a problem before. Never heard of any issues with it, but the, this commercial thing came up, and that was clearly a problem, and it would mushroom into a bigger thing, I think. It's just like, whether it's shark fishing or putting sunglasses down the beach, whatever you wanna call it, I mean, it's just, it's not where Mexico Beach or the ordinance I've read are coming from. So anyway, other than that, it's up to us, do we want to regulate anything with it? Or do we just wanna, did I was like, do we just see how this thing plays out? I mean, do we, we've took care of the commercial part? Do we, has anybody seen anything else, have any issues that I don't know about with shark, with this, with shark fishing on the beach, or anything like?
I don't think so. I, I think some of the conversation at the table, if you go back, was a dust of dawn type of thing. I mean, that could be a request, but you can't make that a law, is that true? It's your turn. We, we can't make a law that is dust of dawn, we can only suggest it, right?
Well, again, that, you can't, on, on city-owned land for health, safety, and welfare issue.
Yeah, but at the waterline, I mean.
At the waterline, that, that's not really anything.
Right.
That's correct.
So, so I agree, I'm, I'm not sure how we got here. Because the last time we talked about this at the table, I thought we had, there were no votes, there were no motions, but I thought we had majority consensus at this table that we did not wanna put any restrictions on recreational shark fishing. I believe this is, I believe it was Councilman Cox that said, we got visitors to come in, they just wanna put a pole in the water, and that's why they come to the beach. And sometimes you're gonna catch sharks, sometimes you're not. We don't wanna get involved, uh, with that. We didn't even say, because it's probably illegal. I don't think we needed to, uh, we, that's just not what we're interested in. Mayor said it himself at the last, the last meeting, we are a fishing village, and we're proud of it.
To, to follow up, Eric, you're exactly right. I, I don't wanna do anything to inhibit the right of someone, whether they're from Bluntstown, or Youngstown, or wherever, from recreational fishing. I think the biggest problem the council had in what, to your point, Jason, we had, and I don't even know the name of the guy, but he was a commercial guy who was setting up in the middle of the afternoon, using a cannon or a drone. I don't particularly have an issue with even commercial guys like the gentleman just spoke. He's educating people, if the city decided, if this council decides, they wanna collectively issue those licenses and let a professional operate after the beach is cleared in the dark, when no one's swimming, and, and no one really should be on the beach. I don't really have an appetite per se to ban that, I just think we need to license it and make sure it's done correctly. But recreational fishing, we need to stay the heck out of it. Because the people culturally who've lived here, and like myself, who now live here and been coming here for twenty-plus years, and I fish offshore, I fish from the beach. You fish, you may target a shark, you may catch something entirely different and vice versa, that's just the nature of fishing. So, getting into all the deep regulation waters, I don't, I personally don't have an appetite for that.
And, and, just, just, before I say that, Jason, one other thing that, um, Mr. Allen brought up is, reminded everybody, how did we get, right? We had an incident with a person, and I'm gonna refer to them just for brevity's sake, as a bad actor. Because not only was this person sort of, uh, skirting our regulations, the folks that I spoke to that approached him, he was mean, he was nasty, and frankly, he was using, I'll call it, heavy equipment to chum the waters. Well, that's already illegal. I think every fisherman in this room knows that it's illegal to chum the waters from the shore in, in, in the state of Florida. So, we sort of had a reaction to, to shut, sort of to shut that down. And we did for the commercial aspect, because we wanna regulate commerce from our beach. We, we, we have that right, and we've done it in the past. Um, but everything else that he was doing was already illegal. Um, and so, the only, the only thing that I, that I came out at the last meeting, uh, with, uh, being a proponent of, is to restrict what, again, I'll just use the common term, the heavy equipment, that is used, whether it's drones or it's cannons, to, to do an illegal activity that's, that's already prohibited anyways. I thought that was the direction we, we wanted to go, because we recognize that we shouldn't and we can't regulate shark fishing. But what we can do is we can regulate shark fishing equipment. And that's where I thought we were going. I've, I've, I've since changed my position only slightly by recognizing that, at least the shark fishermen that I've heard, heard from on this issue, I, but we had, we had some passionate voices. And I asked them, I says, well, are you okay with any restrictions during the day? And everyone said, I don't care, we do our, we do our best shark fishing at night. So I could, I could entertain the idea of maybe adding an ordinance that restricts heavy equipment during the daytime, if that's legal. But, I mean, I, I, you know. Partly also just wants to say, I, I, I don't think we need to do anything else. Because we've, we've got the bad actor shut down by, uh, the commercial license, or, and, the next guy may not be as mean as nasty, the next guy may be a professional, the next guy may wanna do it for the benefit of the community at night. We'll entertain that, uh, uh, as an application for a business license. But everything else this bad actor was doing is already illegal by state law, so why do we need to have a, a local ordinance that just simply restates what's already illegal at, at the state level?
Even if we, if we, if we passed it, or requested a dust of dawn type thing, I don't, I don't think that, we, we can't do that. I mean, beyond the waterline, you're on your own basically. So, there's not much you can, you can do here, and I'm not sure we wanna do anything. I mean, I think the thing that we wanna do is we want the health and welfare of our citizens and, and visitors and tourists, everything else, to be safe. There's enough rules out there that already cover all that. You know, it says that they have to avoid the area, a crowded area when they're fishing. We just need to enforce it, that's all we need to do.
I just have one, one here, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, just in defense of the attorney, Tim. I know, that, that's what I said in the defense, I mean, we did sit here and throw, throw some things around, and, you know, he wrote in here, you know, I remember the cannons and the balloons and the kites and all that. I mean, we did give the, the attorney, say, hey, come up with some, here's some ideas. I, the only thing was, is like I said, and it can always come out, now I'm at the point to, why even do this now? But, you know, clearly, the, the first two sentences were, you know, banning shark fishing. I mean, and that's what blew this up, but it's, 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 we're there now, and, you know, I, like you, do we need to, do we need to just monitor and see if we?
Have an issue.
Are gonna have more issues and, and we address it then? Or, you know, like you said, just keep regulating and regulating.
Yeah, if there's fifteen kids in the water at nine o'clock in the morning, and the fisherman wants to go out there and fish, and it's ten feet from him, we need to enforce that. And we already have the rules to enforce that. What do we need to add?
Well, but now, now, Mayor, here's what I would say about that too. The beach is for everyone, right? Whether I live in Mexico Beach, or I live in Dawsonville, Georgia. You know, if I'm a fisherman and I'm there first, and then the beachgoers show up, you know, those of us that surf fish know that the morning, you know, is better than midday, right? So you go out there early, break of day, you fish for a couple hours, or maybe even a little bit longer. And beachgoers show up, I've already got poles here, you know, that's sort of like having my tent here. You know, they have rights too.
Absolutely.
And, and just because, you know, a vacationer from Charlotte, North Carolina comes in, and their three kids wanna play right where my fishing lines are, you know, they need to be told, look, there's more beach down there. This, this section right here is mine, right?
Yeah, they have an obligation to move left or right.
It's called respect, as, as many of you say.
Make themselves safe. Hey, we're, we're at the table, um, right now, but, uh, there might be some comments from the audience. I'd like to open up the audience one more time based on our conversation. Is that okay?
Oh, is it okay?
Uh, Julie Gardner, I live in Mexico Beach. Um, I don't have a problem with shark fishing. I'm an avid outdoors woman, I hunt, I fish offshore, inshore, if it swims, flies, walks, I hunt it most of the time. Um, the, I was a witness, I'm not someone who complained about it, but I went and talked to the shark fishermen. It was during the day. He came, there were a ton of people on the beach, um, I'll even go so far as to tell you what street it was. It was on Fifth Street. And he came, and he was from Panama City, and I went over and talked to him, because I am a fisherman, and was like, what in the world are you trying to catch? Cause he had, I think it was fifty-waits, I mean, they were huge, they're what we take offshore. So, um, anyway, in talking to him, he said that he was coming over here because he normally charters in Panama City, and he was coming here because our beach is less crowded, and there were less people. But he came right in the middle, and there were people all out there swimming. It was a couple of weeks before Memorial Day, and then he continued to come, and that's where a lot of the citizens got upset, because it was during the day. I actually have videos, because my son is a pilot and has a drone, and he had a big drone, and that page is carrying his fadeout. Um, it wasn't four hundred yards, it was really close, oddly enough. But he was a nice guy, I did, I had a good conversation with him. I will say the next day, or two days later, cause we were on the beach all week, and, um, there was another group of guys that came fishing, and they were like, right, I mean, there was, I don't know, I guess, ten or twelve rods that were out, that were all amongst people. That's kind of where the citizens kind of got upset, is because it was right there, it was way still daylight. There were still a ton of people in the water. So, as a citizen's perspective, I don't think there's a problem with it. My son shark fishes, they just always do it at nighttime. And I think that's where some of the concern was, was the time of day it was.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience?
I'd like to elaborate. So, I, Spencer, Terrifico Tackle, Milton, Florida. I think I speak for most of my compadres here in the audience that, uh, we agree that there are bad actors in our community. I think we need to enforce existing legislation and laws to curtail bad actors, and if anything, encourage positive role models in businesses and the sport in an effort to build a culture of cooperation between law enforcement and shark fishermen. Cause there has been a lacking of that historically in the state of Florida and abroad, that leads to our bad event. A lot of the reasons, a lot, you'll get pushback from these bad actors, because they've been, yes, they're doing the wrong thing, yes, they're doing the wrong thing, but they're also so sick of being told they can't do it here, can't do it there, and they move around and bounce around and you wind up in this situation where you have this combative attitude. I think that punishing an entire community by restricting access is never the answer when there's existing laws. Require a part 107 license for drones. You can't fly a drone with the intent to monetize it without a part 107 license already. You can't drop a payload over people in the state, in, in the United States of America. There are existing laws that exist. Enforce those. Get the enforcement agencies involved in enforcing that because they're not your ordinances, they're not your codes, they're not sheriff's codes. Get those people involved and another, a, a word of wise is never to approach them with municipal cops. It's not gonna work well. Get FWC involved. The municipal cop isn't equipped with the codology and the ability to entertain that person. They know their rights. We all know our rights because we have to in order to exist in this little underworld of shark fishing that we have. You need FWC and they'll set everything straight. And I think a lot of what, I, I watched the original meeting where it was brought up and there was all these things flying. I don't know, anybody that operates a bait cannon left in the entire United States outside of Texas. It's a very outdated, ineffective way to fish and I think it should be illegal. It's a projectile. You, you're not gonna hit any pushback there. You're not gonna get any pushback from acquiring a part 107 for commercial use. You're not gonna get any pushback from the community on these things. You won't even get pushback from the community on limiting access of hours. Close the parking lot. You don't have to close the beach, close the parking lot. So then the people have to walk in really, really far and then they're out of your hair anyway. There's ways around this. We know, we know how it works. Talk to us. And that's all I have to say.
Spencer, I gotta put.
Yeah.
As far as fishing during the day versus.
In the wintertime, we love to fish in the daytime. My biggest concern is that in the wintertime, when there are not tourists on your beach, we will like to fish in the daytime. We don't wanna be around people just as much as you don't want us around people. So, but in the wintertime, we have access to different species at different weather conditions that make day fishing much more preferred than night fishing. And also because in the daytime in the winter, it's not twenty-seven degrees outside.
So what would you say those?
I would say that in the, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, sundown to sunup, I don't think you'd get any pushback. Because nobody should be shark fishing in the daytime.
Let me acknowledge, we, we can't make that rule.
No, you could close a parking lot.
We could definitely, we could definitely be polite and compromise.
Yeah, and encourage that, yeah, yeah. And that's what they've done in New Jersey. There are, there's a blueprint for this. It's been done other places. I, I've driven, I was in South Carolina a month ago doing, having the same conversation with the county ordinances there and we had the same thing. We had to come in heavy-handed and then we had a conversation and they, we settled on something. And it's the same way. We want sensible legislation and sensible regulation that benefits us because then we can say that we're allowed to do this because this is what the rules say. We don't mind that. We do mind overstepping and we do mind prioritizing other uses of the beach over our equally justified and oftentimes protected by the constitution right to use the beach.
I'd like to get your contact information before you leave.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm very ignorant on this. What was your name again? Jacob, Jacob Yawn. Just a thought, Mr. Attorney, I could be way off base. When you're issuing the business permits for these guys, can you not regulate the time that's available to them in the business permit?
Speaking of, there's no, we're not offered any.
You're not, you're not gonna do it at all?
I don't, I'm not speaking on the council, but we don't, we have an order of vendor ordinance for the beach.
Vendor, period.
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 Whatever it is.
Whether it's ice cream, hot dogs, or shark fishing, there's a, if you charge a nickel, then you fall under the ordinance of beach vending.
Okay, gotcha. So same thing for like chair and umbrella companies, photography companies, things like that, can't do photography on beaches?
We have a list.
We have a list and we, we have businesses that have applied for and we see licenses, chairs, kayak rentals and photography.
Gotcha, gotcha. All right, cool. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Come on up. Sure. Sorry, ma'am. Please, sir. Sir, oh, I'm done. Come on up. You're advocating for him, right?
Yeah.
I just wanna say again, I appreciate y'all. I, from what I heard, it sounds like y'all are listening and working with like the citizens and it sounds like y'all are on, just, yeah, the people's side here as far as like being able to work with us and it sounds like we're willing to work with everybody else too. I think like all this, I mean, we, clear communication, needs to be clearly communicated what these rules are, maybe put like, get the input from us, put some signs up and explain to everybody like, hey, like, and even explain to them like, hey, you can't harass a fisherman. You can't approach them if, if they're already there. Like explain to people from out of town that don't understand these things so there's not confusion because, like, you just don't want, like I said, a sour situation. You just want everybody to, I've had people come up and ask me and it's, typically it goes pretty well. It's a little tense or whatever, whenever you can explain it kind of calmly, it's like, you know, and it's, it just takes that, like, just the combative attitude that you mentioned, it just, just like somebody's got to drop that, somebody's got to. And if, maybe it has to be us when somebody comes up and say, "Hey," it just explain to them the rules and if they're talking about calling the cops or something like that, my response is, "Please do." So like, just have somebody up here with some authority, like, and nine times out of ten, they're in the wrong and a cop would probably tell them that. And, and, I mean, if a cop tells them that, I would like for them to enforce it. Like if, if it's to the point where a police officer has to come out there and then enforce that, "We just harassed a fisherman." I don't know what the consequences to that are, but it sounds pretty great. But, I mean, I've just tried to people, I've been to like the people and that is, that has worked. But from, I would say like just the people that are putting up signs and like that or, you know, establishing the rules and everything like that, I just think clear communication with the fishermen and the public and establish rules for the public too. And like just common sense stuff and based on just courtesy, politeness, you know? That's pretty much it. I think this, this whole area, it's kind of important. This is, the, the culture here, and I'm saying this too, I apologize if I'm going a little bit long, but I watched Orange Beach, Alabama, my dad, I mean, that was nothing. It was just, you could buy a piece of, like a whole section of the beach for like pennies on the dollar. And you have fires on the beach and this, this changed in my lifetime. I'm thirty-two years old, about turned thirty-three. We used to have fires on the beach, it was very respectful. You'd put them out, neighbors would come down and hang out with you. I mean, it was just a blast. Ivan came through and knocked everything down and it just, it built back up and everything changed overnight and it was like, and Port St. Joe over here is, I came over here today because this is like, I wanna get away from that. This totally changed. It's not what my dad grew up with, it's not what I grew up with and it's just, I don't know, it's lost its soul to me. And I came over here to come just be in the wild, man. This is like, wherever you'd come and just hang out and go camping and all that, cause that changed. And I'm hearing these things and it scares me just to know that this entire area that we're in, this panhandle that we have, this is paradise, globally unique. And just people that don't understand are coming in and changing in that, like, historically, just throughout time, you've seen that happen. People coming in and they think, "We can change this, we can make this better." It's already okay. It's perfect. I mean, it's not perfect, but like, you know, we're here, like, let us kind of like get our input. Don't just come in here and just start blasting away and changing stuff. That's all I got to say. I appreciate everybody in there.
Appreciate you.
Any other comments? Sure.
Glenn McCown, Youngstown, I know, yeah, I had to remember that. On top of like with the community, with, with all of our shark fishermen guys here today, whether recreational, commercial, both, the guy that you were speaking about that was doing all this and calls a big scene and everything, I'm humble enough to, to apologize for that guy because that represented all of us guys here and put us in this situation right now. And I wanna apologize on, for the community for that because that's not what we represent, that's not what we do and we don't condone any of that. And I apologize that you had to deal with that on the beach. No, it, we're a community. We stand as one and, you know, some of us like this, some of us don't, it doesn't matter. At the end of the day, that's not what none of us, anybody here, anybody online, anybody, the thousands and thousands of people that do this across the, you know, the coastline of the United States, we don't condone none of that. And I just wanted to apologize, you know, as a community to you guys for even having to deal with this and putting us all in this, you know, the situation of things. And we're more than willing, any one of these guys are more than willing to work with anybody and everybody to make this a more positive thing, even for our visitors that come in the spring and the summer and partial fall. We're, we're willing to help out with any way we can of, of things and we all do have day jobs and whatnot. But we're more than willing to help out. We wanna make it positive. We, we wanna make it safe for the beaches. We wanna make it educational for everyone. It ain't just the commercial side of thing. I even had, I hated to have to bring that up, but I just wanted to give y'all's input on things. But on behalf of the shark fishing community, we do apologize for that one individual and if we can in any way, we'd like to educate that guy because that's not what we do. That's not how we do it. And, and that puts a negative impact on us and that's not what we want. That's why we're here today. That's why there's over three thousand petitions that's been signed. So I just wanted to say that. Apologize, guys.
Thank you very much on delivering that message.
Thank you.
You raise your hand a couple times if you, if somebody else can't.
Ah, it's okay, I'll let my brothers go first. All right, so I'm Jessica T V. I run a group, eight-five-oh surf fishing strictly here on Mexico Beach, Laguna, Panama City Beach. I'm a cut it sweet, there are times where I'm out there with my pompano rags and I do catch sharks. Heck, I caught a, a four, forty-three inch hammerhead yesterday off a pompano rig. Didn't mean to. I had some lady yell at me saying, "Get that thing back in the water, get that thing back in the water, you shouldn't have that." Didn't even mean to, you know? I am for my brothers, but we all do need respect in this situation. I ask that you guys do not take the recreational fishing away because that supports me and my family, it's what my family do on the weekends. I really do take the respect to go out in the morning, stay away from people, heck, I'll walk a mile away just to go, get away from everybody. I do have good and bad with the tourists that come. I've been told, "Hey, man, you're doing really good." Especially when I do catch a shark, they really wanna see it. Then again, I've had the tourists that'll come and they'll be like, "Well, what are you doing? You shouldn't have that." Yet I know my laws. So, that's it.
Good deal, thank you. Any other comments from the audience, wanna move back to the table? Couldn't close the audience, move to the table? I just wanted to make sure that we got a feel of what's going on in the audience, what's going on with the public and then what's happening here at this table and then go back and come back again. I know I probably broke every rule that's supposed to be broken, but I think we needed to understand both sides of where we need to go. I don't know how we got, like Eric said, I don't know how we got to where we're at, but we definitely needed to regroup and listen. So I think we've done that. I think we have some work to do as far as working with the attorney and the city administrator to come up with an ordinance that reads basically what we heard and also states the state and FWC's rules. And we abide by them in force and that's it. Any other comments on the table before we move on?
Yeah, just, just, I guess one clarification I'd like to make. So I, I hate to say this word, but let, let me backtrack slightly on something I said earlier. So I'm, I'm not in favor of making local regulations that simply restate the system law. But the gentleman in the audience mentioned drones and I'm also a drone pilot and have part 107 inside all of those. And he's right, it is illegal for any drone operator in the United States to operate a drone over people. Generally, that's considered a populated area and in Mexico Beach, you're technically allowed to fly over the water if there's no people underneath. You're allowed to fly over the town as long as you're five hundred feet up. But back to his statement about the, the local municipal police force. So I don't think any of us here expect the Bay County Sheriff to know FAA part 107. They don't, they, they don't know about flying drones and what's legal and what's not legal. So they, they probably know F, the FWC regulations, they probably know state fishing laws, but I guess where I'm going with this is if we have an appetite to put anything down as a new ordinance, it may be worth restating some of these things that I think we're in agreement with, which is the limitations on shark fishing equipment, whether it's drones, cannons, it's the, the leaders and the hooks that are, that are already not, not allowed by FWC. If we want our, our local sheriff to be able to assist in law enforcement, it may not be a bad idea for us to restate that federal regulation from the FAA part 107 that's simply restated in our local ordinance and say drones are not allowed, something like that.
Thank you, yes, sir.
I just, you made the statement of going back to the table and, and still drafting some sort of ordinance. Is it, do we think we need to pass the attorney and ourselves? Do we, do we want our ordinance on the books or the way I've read here, or do we need it? Let's say need, not want, need, cause it's about that. Or do we just need to table this thing for a while and see how, you know, how it goes? I mean, what's.
I, I believe, I personally believe that we ought to task the, the attorney along with the city administrator and possibly somebody like a Mr. Spencer or somebody in that area that has the knowledge of this to gather together and put an ordinance that council would accept. We obviously need it.
Yeah, I mean, my personal opinion, Mayor, I kinda agree. I don't think we need to address the recreational side of fishing at all, period. I, I, I just, it, it, something that kind of, because not everyone is conscientious like Mr. Spencer, you know, he, he's got, got his act together. I think maybe you could put something in black and white for those guys that are the bad actors so that we can say, "This ordinance is pretty simple, pretty straightforward and it references all the state and federal regulations as well as if it's hours of restriction for commercial operators on our beach." We definitely should address that, but anything that has to do with our friend from Bluntstown who wants to show up at five-thirty just before sunup and put four rods in the water and see where he catches them, I don't think we need to fool with any of that.
We need to have an ordinance for the health, safety and well-being of our citizens and tourists.
Right.
And if we add an ordinance and we write that and the rules are there, we'll be fine. So that's, that's the way we will go. I think that's good.
Thank you.
Well, you know, in the eighteen years that we've lived here on the dedicated beach, we mostly see the shark fishermen come at night and it seems to be a real sport. You'll see a lot of pickup trucks parked there and it's like, it's like a party. They go out on the beach and spend many hours, they wake up in the morning and they're gone. So that does seem to cause problems and I don't know what kind of bait they're doing. I know in years past, they used to go with, go out with the kayak or with the sandbar, probably with the chum or something, but I'm not sure how it's done now because the beach goes out at what, a hundred and seventy-five extra feet, so we're a lot closer to the sandbar now because of the addition. So I'm not sure how that's done now. It doesn't seem to be as many people that come to the beach on our end after, after dark to fish that way or to, to shark fish that way. To me, that's never been a problem and I guess that's been going on for many, many generations of people. It is concerning and we do, like you said, Mayor, we have rights to have to protect our tourists and our local people, the visitors when they're fishing, when they're out there with the kids during the day, you know, and I'm sure that there's only a very few people that are shark fishing near them because they like their privacy too. But it is our responsibility as the city council to protect them as well and their rights.
Right. With that said, that we're tasking the city administrator and the attorney to get together and see how that ordinance looks and we'll look at that in the future. With that said, and Mexico Beach is a fishing village. We've identified that in the response and we'll continue to have conversations hopefully about how, how we manage it. Okay. Anything else on that? We gonna close it? Good. Yeah, move on to the next one. We made some changes in our, our agenda a little bit. So instead of going to code enforcement, I'd like to go to the seaside market so that Lance can get going back to work. Just getting hold of the room for a little while. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you guys so much.
You're James, all right? That's right, yeah. You all wanna grab that door for us? Thank you much. We're out the way.
Yeah.
I think we're going out of order, so we're back to the board. All right, I don't know. We're gonna move on then to seaside market grease trap. move on then in seaside market grease trap. Uh, we had, no, you have that?
Yes, sir. Uh, we're all excited about the prospect of the seaside market. Uh, we can't wait to see construction beginning to get this started. Uh, due to the tight setbacks though, and the available property to build a building, uh, the grease trap simply has to go outside of their property and come just slightly onto some city property in the back of the location. Uh, the agreement that you see, it will grant a license to install, maintain, and service the underground trap. The agreement also requires a ten-day notice for service and pumping of the trap, and the license stays in effect until the agreement is terminated by the city. So if there are any questions about the agreement, uh, we do have Mr. Byrne in the audience as well as Lance Watson, his engineer. So if there's any questions, they will probably better to answer them than me. So any questions about the agreement or anything?
No, I think we've talked this, we've talked, we've talked about this in the past. We've seen clients, we've seen, uh, parents, parents have been who've credited, so.
I, um, I just had one question, if it's at the table. Um, previously, we gave the property variance rights, and in return, we were receiving a deeded portion of the...
Property rights was, was in a green show?
We, we gave them, we gave this variance for the, the exit right, right. I just wanted to be sure, has that been executed? I see it kind of written in here, but...
No, the, the, uh, I received the actual draft last week from the attorney, uh, as well as a survey and before it goes on to the...
So you have all?
Uh, and, uh, with the exception of potentially, uh, adding one signature line, uh, that the deed...
It's all?
Is, is what you all had talked about.
Yeah, everything that part is, I mean, it's been a little while.
But I, but when I drafted this, this grease trap agreement, it hadn't been executed and recorded. So that's why there are blanks in there.
Yeah, and I see none in here.
I also had in here that, uh, that there is, uh, the street, I wanted to verify that, that the street that this is on, uh, or would be underneath is North Thirty First Street. I highlighted that. I just wanted to make sure that is true.
I, I didn't look. See, I highlighted it.
So that, that's...
North Thirty First Street.
What you have.
So I looked that up. That's the official designation of the alley behind the store.
Yeah, that, I, I thought it was, but I just wanted to confirm that. That's why I highlighted the, the agreement.
The alley is the street.
Mm-hmm.
We're talking about. Okay. With that said, everybody's read through the agreement. Are there any questions for, uh, Mr. Durham or, Mr. Durham, would you like to say anything? Or, or, I think one. Come on up. Who, who won again? Come on up. Come on up to the podium.
Sir.
The, uh, what was the question first? Mr. Durham, we didn't have a question. We wondered if you had any comments.
Uh, well, I'd just say that, uh, there's been an arduous process getting these plans done. We're close to the finish line, and we're confident that everybody's going to be proud of what we're doing. We've cut no corners. Uh, I think you'll be very pleased with it. We're, we're certainly very proud of what we're going to present to you coming up pretty quick now. Uh, as far as the, uh, the, uh, the grease trap we're talking about here, uh, I talked to Dark Row yesterday. Dark Row is a company that picks up the grease. And they assured me that, uh, the process was for any arrest or anywhere they picked it up, they started at twelve and one in the morning, and they worked themselves around, and they had to finish by eight o'clock, but most municipalities require that. And that they said they would be coming about every three months to pick it up. Uh, and they'd be here on the larger, larger services, about forty-five minutes, probably hours. We, we're not going to be frying anything in there. So you're not talking about, uh, frying grease. You're talking about drains from the floor and, uh, laboratories and sinks like that. We will have a, a small meat department, and there'll be some, some grease from that. But by and large, though, it's not, uh, it's just a requirement.
So I got a question on that, Mr. Byrne. Are you telling me you're not going to have fried chicken?
No, uh, we'll, we'll deliver this on, of course, thank you. We won't have any fried chicken, no, sir.
There you go.
Uh, but any other questions, uh, that they would have? I think, sir, sir, you want, Lance, you need to...
Yeah.
Let Lance, let the engineer answer. Thank you, Mr. Durham.
Morning. Lance Watson, Southeastern Consulting Engineers. I just wanted to address one thing since you mentioned it, just, just so you guys kind of know what's going on. Everybody's excited about the store, and I have some questions on when it's coming. So the idea was to get this, we had to get this figured out first, because without this, nothing as drawn as possible. But assuming, and we're hopeful that this will get approved, uh, with, with the, uh, the draft agreement the attorney put together. But the plan is, this gets approved, we turn around, we submit a development order application before the deadline for the October meeting, which will be in the next, what, week? We can have two weeks and play that. And it'd be on the agenda for the, uh, development order in October. So that's, that's the plan. And then directly after that, finalize contractor selections and submit for the local actual building permit of the building. So that's, that's the overall plan of that. Um, thank you, Mr. George, for putting that together. We, uh, we were scrambling yesterday. You know, I talked to Mel, I talked to the mayor. We were, uh, trying to figure out some more information, because last time we were here, you guys asked, you know, what time do they pump in? How long does it take? How often they do it? And so we found that information, Mr. George presented, and, uh, it's actually a little, a little less intrusive than, than I was expecting because the idea is that they, they will not, company-wide, the, the, what's the name of the company? Dark Row. Company-wide, they are not allowed to pump during open hours. So it has to be before, before that eight A M. So, uh, trying to think if there's any other questions. Oh, I did, uh...
I just, just two seconds, please. What do you got? You done?
Oh, well, we're talking about placement. I do have the latest plan, if y'all want me to pass it around, because it just shows right there.
Yeah, absolutely. You can, well, you only have one copy of it?
I have ten.
Ten, okay.
I only had six last time. Might not enough.
I thought we were going to pass one around any day, so I had to look at it.
And then I also, if y'all care to look at it, I've got it. If not, that's fine too. But I've also got the specs of the grease trap, the size, configuration.
It's just going to have a regular...
Manhole lid.
Sewer lid, manhole lid?
Yeah, manhole lid and, and a little equipment, uh, in a box, just like a, just like a lift station or...
And it's street, uh, satisfied when you drive on top of it.
Traffic rated. And it's, and it's not in, well, that's another thing I want to clarify, because we did mention under the road. It's, it's, it's under the right-of-way limits, but it's not in the paved road. It's south of the paved road. So, but it is traffic rated.
Eric, you have a question?
Yeah, just, uh, a clarification. I think I heard it from Mr. Durham. It, uh, about the approximate time it's going to take to drain the grease trap in twelve o'clock in the night is like forty-five minutes?
On average.
On average.
And this is not the largest.
And they're speaking of huge operations when they say forty-five minutes to an hour. Hours won't be that long right now.
Yeah, we're talking seven hundred fifty gallon tank.
That's the final answer.
And, uh, that's more for fifteen hundred plus gallon tanks.
Is it mandatory that, is it mandatory that you have it pumped in three months? Or is there a possibility it could go for five minutes?
That's not mandatory by any regulation on grease trap itself, but a lot of municipalities do have that, that stipulation.
Yeah, I just, so everyone knows the reason for my question. Uh, there's some folks at the end of the street, um, uh, who are not permanent residents, but they're frequent, uh, visitors and vacationers. And when they heard that the seaside market was coming, they're very appreciative of it, especially they'll be able to walk, walk across the street, get their groceries to Mexico Beach, but they're worried about the two o'clock in the morning delivery trucks that, uh, if they have their, if, if they're rumbling through and they got their headlights, the headlights go right into their bedroom window. So i- i- if this is a, a forty-five minutes every three months issue, I, I'm sure that's fine. And that's not the, the, the nightly delivery truck is not what we're talking about here, but that, that was the reason for my question. There's some, there's a couple of residents here that are going to be sensitive if, if they're in town.
Right.
Uh, when, when there's stuff going on outside their bedroom window at twelve o'clock at night, they would want those to, those activities.
Yeah, one thing about, one thing I want to mention too about the, the frequency, is very likely it will be longer than three months. Three months is a minimum that is set by, or maximum time that is set by municipalities a lot of times. The, with the limited grease that they're going to have, like you mentioned, he'll have a grease kitchen like we do in Piggly Wiggly in St. Joe. Uh, and the tank is oversized for what he needs, just because you can't get one small enough for what he needs, uh, because of the limited grease. So it could likely be more than three months. Once they get going, we'll note, but it would, it, on average, the expectation is every three months quarterly.
I do have a question, and I know it's something everybody that's watching online wants to know, because we are excited about the market. Once you got all your permits, contractors selected, what do you estimate, and I'm not going to hold you to it, but what do you estimate construction time to be?
Well, I'll probably lean on George more for that because, uh, he's, he's in more contact with the contractors that are bidding on project.
We've received some bids, and, uh, it's going to be about ten months plus rain days. So the three hundred days plus added rain days, so.
So once we submit the...
Maybe by this time next.
Once we submit that building permit application, as soon as we can get it back, get it rolling.
The city would need a copy of, of the diagram.
Grease trap?
Yes, sir.
And this is from the plumbing engineer that's, uh, on the M E P team for architectural team, and he, he sent this to me yesterday.
All right. Any other questions on the table before we move on this? We had, uh, motion to go ahead and move on the agreement?
And that should be conditioned upon the execution and recording of the deed, because that has to be a part of the agreement.
Okay, so he asked for it.
Um, okay, so I'll make a motion, correct me if I say this wrong, but I make a motion that we approve the seaside market grease trap, uh, location, uh, and specification is subject to the registering of the deed.
Motion second. Can I take the rope, please?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Fasaghi?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Durham. Thank you, Lance. Thank you. Thank you.
We see in two months?
Sooner the better.
No more applications or presentations.
Sooner the better.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
All right, we're moving on to the next thing on the agenda that we moved back, and that would be code enforcement process and notification of violation. The captain, line.
Y'all want to leave now? It's going to be boring. Okay, they asked me to come up to speak to you about the process of our notices of violation because it's, it's a process that I don't think a lot of people totally understand. Let me look at that.
Oh, this, didn't know this was going to pop up on the screen.
Oh, no, it doesn't. Nope, don't get that one. But anyhow, um, there's a lot of different, uh, things that's, that will start off for notice of violation. Once I get a complaint or if I see one, um, usually normally we have to take a picture. And then we'll come back with it. I take the picture and I download it to the computer. Then from the computer, then we have to make double copies of everything. And then the violation starts. You pull out a notice, adjust the notice to make it, uh, applicable to the violation itself. And then you do a certified mail on that. Um, another, the chart over here says if it's not corrected within ten days, I can't really go by that. Um, that's probably the wrong time. It's not due to our fault, my fault, or the Pope. It's a U S Postal Service. In fact, a lot of people will call and they'll just get irate and they'll say, I know, if we had Pony Express, the mail would get to you a lot sooner than what we do now. But it's, uh, it can take up almost a month just to get up to Atlanta. I've had people call. I had one in Wyoming that took two months to get out to them. So these, these dates, you can't really go by. So that's why people will call me three weeks later and say, well, there's, there's still this violation law. They haven't even received it yet. And I can, then I can, I usually take them at least once or twice a month. I'll try to go into the U S P S and look up the, uh, certified letter to see where it's tracking to, where they've sent it to next, or if they're holding it for another redelivery. Um, so that's, that, these dates aren't really truly what we have to, what we can go by. And I know the next one says, um, a request appeal within ten days. I can't go by that either because they haven't really received it. So I'm pretty lenient with people as long as they call. And I'll say, I'll say, as long as you call and tell me that I can have notices, because I list everything on a spreadsheet that I've done. And I'll make a notation that, you know, the customer's called, just received the letter, um, they're working on trying to get somebody to say, like, cut a lot. Well, they might have received the letter, but then we can't get the lot cut for another four weeks because of rain delays. And then that puts, pushes back all the landscaping people to cut their lots. So there's a lot of factors that go into a notice that just because you called and, or just because we sent one out, that it's not done in two weeks, a lot of times it will never get done, hardly in two weeks. So I just want you to know that these notices do take a lot of time to, to get, to get done. Um, another thing, once they come back, if it comes back unclaimed, uh, a lot of my LLCs, they usually come back unclaimed. Why? I don't know. They just don't want to. So I'll go back. I've researched. I even tell Mel that I had a client up in Tennessee, lived in one county. It came back. We sent it out again, came back again. Then I went and I searched all the counties around that county, and it took, that took another couple hours just to see if they moved somewhere. Well, we did find them, and I did find them into another county. And they had, um, so we sent it to that lot. Well, that lot came back, but that's not the one they lived in. That's the one they just bought. So I searched again, and I found a lot where now that that, this is where they're at home. So I think that he's finally received it. But this has taken since, uh, October to finally get this person to respond. So it's, it's a lengthy process. And in the meantime, we did try to speak to the special master. Um, he looked over the case. I sent him everything I had. One thing that kind of delayed him on it was because the people have not been officially notified. I guess I could have driven to Tennessee myself and probably would have found them a lot quicker, but they won't let me take the company car that far. So... But any, uh, if you've got any more, if you've got any questions that, that, about the notices and what else happens to them, um, I can try to, try to tell, but give you an answer to them. But there's, um, there's just different things that will happen to it. But I do have a spreadsheet on every one of them, every certified letter I sent out or, yeah, every certified letter I've sent out. So far, we sent out, I sent out almost ninety of them so far. So we've, um, we spent almost eight hundred dollars just in certified letters. So it kind of adds up because UPS keeps jumping the price up and they don't deliver. And so I don't know why we pay so much for everything that we have to do.
What's the majority of those certified letters for? Which violations?
We had a lot of them this year on, um, vacant lots not being cut.
Not being moved.
And then we had a lot of them on turtle violation, turtle lights violations. That was, um, one that was given to me by, um, the renourishment process. So I had to stop doing everything else. I was doing, concentrated on the turtle light violations with the list of the lots and going out and either speaking to the people or sending them notices of violations, especially ones out of town where they had to change their lights, where they changed them off to regular bulbs. They had to go back to amber. Um, so that took about a month and a half to go through that process. Um, they supposedly came back again, uh, in August, the first till, till the fourteenth of August, and did another survey. But I haven't heard back from them yet. So I don't know if we still have any more violators out there or if they're handling it through F W C now.
Ms. London, we just sent out a, we just sent out a violation to, uh, two oh seven, I think it was, something like that. And we've got to reply back. When we issued the violation, were we right about that violation or not?
With two oh seven, what?
This is the Gastra?
Oh, uh, yeah, it's, the, the lot needed to be cut. Uh, it was an, it was a complaint from a neighbor. I usually respond to all the neighbors that they call and complain. So evidently something happens. They do see snakes or whatever else coming in.
Did you see reply that it came back?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, it just came back yesterday.
Yeah. It's a question whether it was developed or not, the property?
I don't know. I have to, I've looked at it. The grass had been cut before because if it wasn't undeveloped, all you gotta do is look at the other lots that have all trees and weeds that are, you know, almost twenty feet high. This was just a flat-out grass weed cut. There was no overbrush, but Mel had spoken to me about... There was no overbrush, but Mel had spoken to me about it a little bit before the meeting, and I thought I'd get back.
So what's the difference if it's, I know we have it, it was a twelve inches or something like that, I think, twelve to sixteen inches, whatever it is, the growth. If there hasn't been a property on there, they don't have to do it, is that?
If it's never been cut, it doesn't have to be cut. And I know there are a lot of lots.
Is that state law, or is that a Mexico Beach law?
Mexico Beach.
So, it says.
Because they wanna keep it natural, the environment natural. We've got some environmentalists that live here, or actually have housing here.
But it's identified as a residential lot.
Most of them are, yes.
I got a question for you. So, I know it reads in the L D R, L D C, but if it's undeveloped, I've seen that, because you, we've talked about who can, who can be, have pressure on, who cannot.
Right.
But you're also telling me, I didn't realize this, if it's been cut once, it's considered now it has to be kept up?
It's supposed to be, yes.
I didn't know that.
Even if it's never been developed?
It's like, if they maintain it, and then they stop maintaining it, it's a problem.
They've totally cut off, cut everything down, and it's just, you know, small weeds or whatever, and grass growing, then that, yes, they're supposed to keep, maintain it.
Sounds like a gray area, though, you know, it's, if we're saying it's never been developed, and they don't need to cut the grass, and then one time they did.
They should have never cut it.
But where does it say that you have to?
It doesn't say you have to. But, well, if she does, and like, if there's a lot down on, on Florida, down towards C Street, she's cut that lot, now she has to maintain that lot. Now, if you look across the street, there's another lot that has a lot of overgrowth, that lot's never been cut, and they don't have, she don't have to, and she knows that too.
So if it's a lot, and, and you can show us documentation, it reads that, that says that if it is a undeveloped lot, and gets mowed once, it has to be continually, continuously maintained?
Supposed to, yes.
We have that in writing?
No.
Okay, that's a problem.
So, is that, so, it sounds like that's pure interpretation, even if it's a consistent judge?
Wasn't mine, no, I didn't do it. This was way before me that I, this had been passed down to me.
Okay, so it's like an unwritten rule?
So, this brings up a case of, and you and I've had some discussions, Kathy, about, quote, written rules, that, what, previous administrators have, quote, violated, and we can use several examples, whether they be bringing a hundred loads of dirt onto a lot, or putting a shipping container on a vacant lot, or not mowing the said lot once the shipping container's on it, or on and on and on. And obviously, you drive around and see these things, and they just get into that process of, on the spreadsheet, people are not responding. I guess my question is, at what point does a violator get sent to the special master?
Either one, they can request it, I've had several of those, or, and once I send, if I get no responses, and we've sent it out, and we know they've received it, and we get it back from UPS, that they received the letter, and if we don't get a response back from it, then I send it to the special master. And then the special master has his things that he sends out, and we just had one last year where it was two lots that weren't, they were consistently being cut, they just, for some reason, stopped being cut. So I sent the file to the special master, and I think, about a month later, I got a nice, nice check that he had to pay for the special master, and for the not, the cotton lots not being cut.
So, what's your experience with special master enforcing or not enforcing these long-time, handed-down, through history unwritten rules? Are they generally supported of the citizen's possession, or?
If I have good documentation, yes. If you've got all that, if you've got proof of everything, it's just like going to court, that's what it is.
Yeah.
So you have to have.
In this case, we don't, obviously. Ms. Lyne, you wanna come up, you had a question, I'll get over to that.
Oh, I'm sitting in the wrong chair today. I just, Lisa Looney, I just wanted to tell you that it has been an unwritten standard for at least twenty-four years, that if the lot is cut the first time, then they have to maintain it, even though it never had any building on it. So, I don't believe it's ever been written down, but it's gone, it goes back at least that far. Just wanted to let you know.
And Mr. Attorney, how would you take that, how would you?
Well, two things, Mayor, that it, your code, ninety-four point oh one, defines a nuisance to include any grass underbrush or weeds which exceeds eighteen inches in height. So by definition, it doesn't make the distinction between developed, undeveloped, doesn't matter. By definition, a nuisance is any, any grass underbrush or weeds which exceeds eighteen inches in height. For some reason, ninety-four point oh two puts a duty to remove, and it says, it shall be the duty of the owner of any previously developed lot to remove or cause to be removed from such lot all excessive growth of weeds, underbrush, or dangerous trees, and to remove or cause to be removed all debris, rubbish, trash, abandoned vehicles, boats, refrigerators, and other articles defined in section ninety-four point oh one. I'm not sure really why ninety-four point oh two exists, because if by definition, it's a nuisance, then it's subject to citation by the code officer, period.
So that's how you interpret, you interpreted that it's, it's as a nuisance?
It's a, it's a nuisance.
Nuisance to, eighteen inches, eighteen inches, okay.
Yeah.
So then you go to ninety-four oh two.
Which then puts a duty to remove on.
Developed.
Previously developed lot.
Okay, so how do you interpret us issuing a, a violation of the eighteen inches?
If it's a, if it's a nuisance, then it's a violation of your code, period.
Mowed or unmowed previously.
Ninety-four point oh one makes it a nuisance, why you have ninety-four oh two, I don't know.
I wonder if, I wonder if ninety-four oh two, not to be too pedantic, but what's the definition of developed, right?
There's not more to it than.
Yeah.
Well, developed could be construed to, if you have mowed it one time, it's now been developed, right? I mean, you've, you've changed the landscape of the lot. I mean, it could be construed that way. You took Mother Nature and.
All right, I think we went way, went way off, and I probably brought you there, I just wanted, we had an issue, an email, we all got emails, and so it's something we have to solve. There's some, some good input there.
Also, one, one more thing. Anonymous complaints that I receive, they go right in my trash. We're not, we don't take anonymous complaints, and that's state law. So we have to have, if you don't give me your name, address, and phone number that's on the form, or in the email, then we don't, code enforcement, we just ignore that.
All right, that's a good point. I wanted to get back on track, but John, you have one thing, come on.
I do have a question. When you talk about lots, John Harrow, last house.
How's that, Mayor?
My question is, you talk about an undeveloped lot, developed lot, say someone is an environmentalist, like Ms. Lyne mentioned, we have some people here, they buy a lot from someone that had cut the grass once, but yet they want it to grow natural. Are they confined to the previous owner's ownership?
I, I, for the attorney, yeah.
You guys need to consider it, because if someone comes down here and buys a lot, because they wanna buffer their next property that they may own next to it, or whatever, with the intentions of never developing it, you're, you're kind of handcuffing them. So I don't know if that's covered in the code.
Somebody owns a land and buried a body in there, and why you should be responsible, right?
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry. You're mumbling, Mayor, speak up, for people on YouTube, speak up.
I won't ruin it.
Back there.
So, I have a question. Julie Gardner, Mexico Beach. So if you, if you go with John's theory of, I bought a lot, but I don't wanna maintain it, and it was developed, I have some friends right over on Twenty-Sixth Street, that they bought a place that was already a house. The hurricane destroyed the house next to them, and they get snakes and everything else because that lot isn't maintained. Now Kathy has done her best to try to get those people to maintain it, but our system is broken, because by the time she finally can get some of these folks to answer, then it's another six months, and then it's sky-high again, and we keep chasing our tail, and these people get away with not having to maintain their lot, but twice a year, and the rest of us are cutting our grass, and it doesn't ma, I mean, we're, and we own a lawn care company, I'll go ahead and say that, but, but, I mean, everybody else is maintaining their stuff. But it's not fair to those people that now you wanna be natural, I mean, that's not fair, 'cause now you have a problem that you shouldn't, you shouldn't have, because there was a house there, there's a concrete slab there. So I think you're getting into a develop, done develop, I bought it this way, well, what if somebody buys a house, well, I don't really want the house, I just want it to be natural, and they let the house go. I mean, just 'cause they have the money to do it, doesn't mean it's right, in my opinion.
That, that house is developed, being the middle of a hurricane, took it, went out and walked, was developed.
Okay, let's get to the table, Mayor. Your points are well-taken, I mean, we obviously need to give it to special masters, and we said this a million times at this table, you have to put teeth on everything that we do, but you have to get facts, too, you have to get the facts of what, what are they thinking? They're thinking that it's undeveloped, and they can go natural. Has it been mowed once? Then it's not natural. I mean, we have to sort all that out with the attorney, and make sure we're on the right, not on slippery.
And I would suggest, Mayor, that you all consider making some modifications to that chapter ninety-four to enhance your definition of nuisance, probably delete the developed, undeveloped distinction. There's some things that need to be done on that, that chapter.
Along the nuisance line, because Ms. Lyne drives around, she sees all kinds of nuisances around town, how would that apply to someone bought a property, semi-destroyed or destroyed after the hurricane, started a construction process on it, stopped said construction process, and now there's weeds all around it, it happened, the permits have expired two, three, four years ago, whatever, that also would fit the definition of a nuisance property, right? No work is going on?
Yes, but I think you need to make that a little clearer in the definition. The, the definition is limited, it does say, any building, structure, or the place or location where any activity is in violation of local, state, or federal law is conducted before, that were maintained. By definition, if the building permit has lapsed, and they've abandoned the development, you could insert in ninety-four oh one, the definition of nuisance, exactly what you're talking about. I think that would make it clear, that's what I'm saying. Many jurisdictions have the definition of nuisance is about forty things long, including noise, and, and all kinds of stuff that you just don't have in your definition. You do have about grass more than eighteen inches, that's being.
So when you look at the nuisance ordinance, and also the ninety-four oh two?
Well, ninety-four oh two, and also it carries down, Mayor, to ninety-four oh four, which, again, talks about should the owner of any previously developed lot fail, and then it goes on. If, if, if the intent is, of the council is, if it's a nuisance, it's a nuisance, doesn't matter whether you're developed or undeveloped, then we need to, we need to fix some of that.
What I'm, what I'm hearing from the table, and what I'm hearing from the, from the citizens, is that they want, they want the eighteen-inch ordinance to be enforced. If there's a block in doing that, I think code enforcement, city administrator, and yourself ought to get together, present something to the council that can give us that.
Yes, sir.
So, Mayor.
Jason?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
So, Mayor, I, I mean, it, it, it sounds complicated, but I, I mean, I think it's really simple. I think we need to reevaluate the definition, and add some, add some definitions to nuisance. I think, you know, the, the weeds and the eighteen-inch grass, I think, is, is proximate, and a lot of residents complain about that, but I think a lot of other residents have other nuisance categories that they would want to add, like, you know, Steve just, just gave another example of a property that started and then stopped. I mean, we have council members here at this table who have complained about building projects that just, they, they take too long, they, they, they take multiple years, they, they work for three months, they take nine months off, they work. So, this may be something that we may, we want to expand to, I, I don't know if it rises to the level of community workshop, but maybe is this something we could ask the P and C to investigate, if they're not already overwhelmed with the other duties we've asked them for the L D C.
Well, I think we ought to start with the ordinance, and, and, I mean, that's probably not a bad suggestion, and maybe we start by having that ordinance looked at by code enforcement, city administrator, and the attorney, pass it on to P and C, and then bring it back here. I, I agree with that.
I think it's just real important that we leave the undeveloped property alone, and don't expect them, if the grass is eighteen inches high, to cut, cut it back, because there's undeveloped lots all over the city with large amounts of trees and everything else, and they've been that way for generations, and that's people that have decided to hold on to that property. So I don't see we, how we can throw that into the nuisance thing, and you got grass eighteen inches high, you guys are supposed to come in and cut all that down, and there's twenty trees on the lot? I, I think it's important that we leave that alone, the undeveloped property, because that's gonna open up a whole can of worms for Kathy, if she's supposed to be responsible to go to every property owner that has undeveloped land that's never been touched for generations, and never gonna say you have to cut it, 'cause it's eighteen inches of grass. What do you have, Julie?
Can I give clarification a little bit, 'cause I was curious about this. So I Googled the definition of an undeveloped lot, and it basically says a parcel of land with no significant structures, infrastructure, or utilities present. So it says, if you have no services, like water service, sewer service, or electricity hooked up to it, that's considered an undeveloped lot, which is probably gonna fall into the majority of the ones that you're talking about, Ms. Linda. You know, the other ones that they've already paid for their water tap and sewer tap fees, those would not be considered undeveloped because they have access to utilities?
Okay, thank you. Are we good at task with what we've done?
Yeah, and then only, I'll just make one statement, circle back around while we're here. There's been a lot of, I've heard over the years, a lot of talk about stuff not being handled right, this is not right, this person don't hear that they're right. So I think Ms. Lyne was probably brought here today to try to shed some light on this process, and explain to us really what it takes to get something done, which is, it's, it can be monumental. You got people that play the games, you got the, I don't wanna get too far into the permit deal, where a guy's nursing the permit, and if he does a little stuff, he can go re-up it, and then there's just all kinds of stuff, but I didn't want to lose track of, I mean, we need to make some adjustments in our ordinance, this probably, to define some stuff as to why code enforcement's here today to try to explain this process.
Well, and that's an interesting point, I think, maybe we need to dig deep and find out, is there a better way than certified mail? That could somehow.
Cause it's been.
Get the job done in, in less than ten or twelve months.
I've been here years and years, and I've watched the councils try to put more and more teeth into this, and it never seems to be enough to, to take, just go take action, and it may not ever be.
It all comes back to the fact, if you're a violator, and you can stand, and you can say, well, I never got the notice, I never signed to receive the certified letter, then that, that, you're immediately in a position of an advantage. You can say, well, I was never told those in violation.
How do those same people, you know, get a water bill, or a tax notice, and then it's paid? Like, how does that happen to the same address person, but yet, when we're trying to do a violation for code, it just?
For men, they're playing the game, but these people are.
They know, it's a certified letter.
I think we all know the answer to that.
I don't know that I wanna solve the problem here today, but.
Yeah, just two seconds here, I'm sorry. You're ready, guys?
They can always pay online without getting their bill in the mail. I'd like to say that uh code enforcement in Mexico Beach is more difficult than any place that I've ever worked. And part of the reason is this. I think in one of my wicked reports, I put that only about fifteen percent of our properties are homesteaded. So that means most of our properties are not owned by people who live here. So if you gotta try to chase them down, it's not as easy as you think. You go to the property appraisers, you know, website, you find what their address was when they bought the property. Well, maybe they've moved three times since then. So you gotta do this hunt and search them. So uh it's not as easy. And we aren't looking at other ways of delivering stuff, just certified mail. For instance, there's been a longtime offender that never does receive the certified mail. Kathy just happened to drive by their house the other day and found someone there so she was able to deliver it, you know, firsthand. And so she's trying to get out more and more and trying to find people who might be in town at the time. But the problem is they don't always come here during the week. They come during the weekends and that makes it even more difficult.
Mayor, so it it sounds like we could have another workshop on this. Uh, so let's put this to bed with just my last comment. Is it legal? I mean, for us to go say the next step, like, can we can we hire process services?
Is it legal?
Yeah, legal.
There are other methods of service that would that have been approved for due process and and those can be incorporated into the ordinance. And and the people that are avoiding service uh by certified mail, typically, uh, when I send out demand letters, I will send them out certified and regular mail. There's a rule in Florida called mailbox rule that says if you put something in the mailbox properly addressed, properly stamped, that that it's presumed to be delivered. Uh, so there are other things that can be added. There's uh, you know, other kinds of notice that can be done. Uh, because it's all about due process. You want to make sure that the person that is being cited has due process and knew or should know that there's a there's a procedure going on that involves them. And again, the the special magistrate is intended to be the judge. So their their roles should be limited to being the judge. If a proceeding has to go to the judge, otherwise the rules should be that if somebody doesn't contest it within a certain period of time, uh, then the special magistrate can enter an order and and without a hearing. So uh, so there are things that can be done to your ordinance and at the risk of of generating something that is not something you all may not like. I I I will work with Mel to try to come up with something.
We we need to amend the ordinance, rewrite the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
All right, enough on that subject. Did it, Lisa, sorry, Hannah, I'm sorry. I just, did you have one comment?
Just one quick comment. Mel actually hit on the head what I was gonna say. I was gonna say the reverse. Seventy to eighty percent of our property owners are out of town. You hit that on the head with the homesteaders. So perhaps you could find a way to look at it differently and require out-of-town property owners to keep a current address on file or figure out some kind of consequence for it in order to get the mail to them. Instead of having to track down and go through months of of wrangling through the computer to find where they might be. If they don't keep a current address on file, then they've got, I don't know how many days, months. And then you do what you want to do to their property. You know, make, put the the onus on the property owners to keep a current address since seventy to eighty percent of our our houses are out-of-town owners.
A good point. Let's see what we can get away with legally from the attorney. All right, uh, moving on to uh number five. Resolution 2504, platting replats and metals. Mr. Mel?
Yes, sir. I'll start by reading uh the background from the abstract. The Senate Bill 784 was signed by the governor on June 20th, 2025. The act changes the local government's ability to approve plats and replats by way of the public hearing process. The city must designate an administrative authority to receive and review a plat or replat. The new legislation also provides a restricted timeline for consideration of an application. Written notice must be given within seven working days or for any missing or incomplete documents needed for consideration. The plat or replat must be approved, approved with conditions, or denied within the timeframe identified in the letters sent to the applicant unless the applicant requests an extension of time. The local government may not request or require the applicant to file an extension of time review. A plat or replat must be administratively approved prior to hearing. So if we change none of our laws or ordinances, state law will prevail. So that's already done. End of story. Please note that nowhere in that or in the legis- legislation is says anything about a lot split. That's a completely different animal. So to read what we do have in our current uh ordinance, it says a lot split that involves a parcel consisting of two lots, as shown on a validly recorded plat, being split back to the original platted lots without any change of their boundaries may be approved by the city administrator so long as a lot split would not result in either lot or the improvements located on them being in violation of the Mexico Beach Competency Plan or LDC. It further goes on to say the combinations of two lots may be approved administratively by the city administrator. So between those two items is our current process, you know, that states that you must put some a sign on properties. You gotta go with the PNC, gotta go to the city council. That's not changed. So uh, if you hear complaints about the lot split process, that's not in process of being changed.
Okay, uh, we're we're gonna ahead and open this to the public first.
Lisa Logan. Mel, would you please explain to me again what you see as the difference between a replat and a lot split? I'm sincerely asking for the difference there.
You know, a replat or a plat would require an engineer to do the survey, of course. It would require it to be done in a certain manner that's required by state statute, which does specifically state you've gotta have a certain type of paper. You gotta have, you know, your thing where point north so you know what direction things are. So that is a replat where you formally go through the process.
Okay, I'm I'm missing something. If you replat something, you're splitting blocks, are you not?
You can if you want to replat it.
So this, you're saying what we have had so many applications for over the years, which we have all called lot splits. You're saying that that is not the same as a replat? And that if someone wants to split a lot, I mean, literally split a lot, that this Senate bill does not apply to that? But you're changing the plat if you split the lot, aren't you?
You can accomplish that in two different ways, a lot split or a plat.
Do you want me to help you?
Please, Lisa.
Typically, you're required to plat generally if you split a parcel property into three or more parcels. Because at that point in time, the engineering has to be done, the surveying, perhaps, or motor issues have to be considered. And ultimately, when you finish all of that, there is a MyLAR document that's signed by the currently, well, before July 1st, signed by the city council. It then goes to the clerk of the court and it's recorded. Okay? It's a very formal process that's undertaken to do a plat. A lot split, typically, uh, just you're splitting a single lot into two, will not require a replat because it it doesn't trigger the three or more requirement typically. And so all you're doing is splitting an existing parcel into two pieces. Now, you couldn't do a domino effect and say you have a big piece of land and say, I'm gonna do a single lot split. And then next week, I'm gonna come and do another lot split. I'm gonna do another one. And and domino, you can't do that. That would require a plat. But a single lot split or a combination typically is not required to to have a plat or replat done. And uh, and to follow on what Mel said about this law, which is now incorporated into into section 177.071 of the Florida statutes. The legislature has divested this body and the process uh of going through this body and even the planning and zoning uh of of divested them of all of that. I don't know why they did that, but that was the legislature that did it. And now it's up to the city to to follow the state law, I'm telling them, unless it's changed. And they have to designate an administrative authority and and administrative officer to comply with that statute.
Okay, I understand all of your words. Uh, I think I understand the concept, but I want to be clear in my mind. When we have people who want to split lots, that is a separate issue, you are saying. If it is a residential lot, they want to split it in two, that's a separate issue. And that will not fall under this, but will fall under our existing laws?
Well, as as the city administrator said, it has to be in compliance with the LDC and the Conclaim. So if the lot split would trigger uh uh some violation of the LDC or the Conclaim, then that would have to be evaluated.
Okay, for instance, we just did a a um, I don't know what to call it now. An issue on Hatley Drive at the corner of 15th. Guy wanted to split it into three lots. That we all considered a lot split. That's how we handled it. So this is my question. Does that now fall i- in three lots? So does that now fall under this new Senate bill or does it?
No, that that would still be governed by your local ordinances. And I I don't have them all up here in front of me.
No, yeah.
So the question becomes, at what point does Mexico Beach require a plat? And that's really the question.
Okay.
And and if historically they've not required a plat at three, uh, because that's somewhere in the code of Mexico Beach, then that's a different story. But but Mexico Beach will drive the decision of how how the division of property then triggers the plat requirement. But once the plat requirement is triggered, this new law says who has to deal with it. And it's no longer the governing body, which historically it's been. And I don't know why they did it.
Yeah, go figure. Um, okay. My my overriding concern is that division of properties in Mexico Beach, and and almost all of our properties are residential in well-established neighborhoods. I my concern is that that division of properties is no longer under the control of the city with our established format on review of that. That is my concern. What you have said to me does not allay that concern. Um, I still am not clear at all. I if all of y'all are clear on it, great. I'm not. Um, but my primary purpose here is to protect our residential properties.
Are you saying that it's not under the control of the council as it's been in the past? Is that what you're saying? That's what you're thinking?
I'm 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 saying to me, splitting, I don't even know whether to use the term, splitting a lot. I'm concerned about the residential lots that are often up to be divided. And I'm concerned that they will fall under this so that the only person is one person who is going to look at that and there will be no input.
And that and that person is still in the city along with EPCI and a plant.
But that takes that takes, this process takes neighbors of who are around this piece of land to be divided out of the equation. It takes public input out. It takes planning and zoning out and it takes the council out. That is my concern. And again, obviously, I'm missing something important here because I do not see how this resolution protects us from all of our resources going away to protest any kind of land division. And again, y'all may, all of y'all may understand it completely different. I'm having difficulty understanding it. That's my concern.
Good.
Yours at the table, can I speak on?
Yeah, um, yeah, if you're done.
I'm done.
Is there any other comment? Yes, were there any other comments that need to be made? No? Okay, good, sir.
Uh, 3.07.00 of the Mexico Beach Code says subdivision of property into three or more parcels requires a plat approval by the city and recording of the approved plat or replat by the applicant in the Bay County official records. And then it goes on to talk about a plat. So that that is consistent with other jurisdictions, the three or more. I I don't know specifically about the one you're talking about, but if you're only splitting it into two, then that would not fall under your ordinances into the requirement of a plat.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Gibson.
So I've seen this and I'm I I do have heart, it's it's heartburn giving it to one person, but it's a state law, says we have to have administrator that streamlines this. To y'all, to the point, the LDR, I should have brought it in. So Mel spoke on one part of it, the lot split part. If it's two platted lots, they can be split back into their original platted lots. Or you can combine it. So that's one, that's one.
Yes.
So the other thing is, is we have rules in there that say splitting of platted lots. And I don't have it in front of me. And it reads something like it has to be within ten percent of the surrounding parcels. Because we have had a lot of people come here and try to split a platted residential lot. And we put rules in there. They're starting to be challenged again. They haven't come here. I've heard of them coming, but they haven't. Two people wanting to split a platted residential lot. So it is going to be on our, what we're gonna have to do, I mean, we obviously have to designate for the by the state law a person to do this. But we're we're the only, where we come in is we have to make sure the LDC, LDR is written to the T of what we're going to do because that's what this person, whether it be him or whoever's in the chair, is going to have to follow. So that's our only avenue to make sure that this is done, correct? That we don't have stuff slipping through. I know what y'all are talking about. But the state took it out and this specifically says plats and replats. So I know the division of three or more is stated, but it's to me, and Tim, you can say, if you have a platted lot in a neighborhood and you want to split that lot, is that in itself not called a replat? If it is a already.
It's a lot split. There.
No, no.
Mel read you a part of the ordinance, or she, part of that section 3.07.00. There is a next sentence that says other lot split applications shall be processed as described below and may be approved by the city council only. So the first part of it is talking about two lots in a validly recorded plat. If you had an unplatted parcel out here that existed that somebody wanted to do a lot split on, uh, then that has to go through. that somebody wanted to do a lot split on, uh, then that has to go through P and Z and come to y'all for the lot split. But what, what Mel read you had to do with two lots and a validly recorded plat being split back to the originally platted lots without change to their boundaries may be approved by the city administrator, and then it goes on. So, if you got plat and you got lots that were combined and now they're being separated, uh, they can be approved by the city administrator as long as they're not in violation of the conflict in the LDC.
No, I know that part, and that's perfectly legal. The part I'm talking about is people are coming here, not people. Say that it's a platted lot in Mexico Beach, it's plat from 1950. And it's a platted residential lot in a neighborhood. Well, what happened and what triggered this is we, the lot may be, this particular lot may be of bigger size than another lot, even though the other lot's just platted. People were assuming that they could split that platted lot. That was a Mexico Beach platted lot, that they can split that. And there's been some confusion and people talking about, well, if it meets square footage and it does this, then they can do that. But it's been under the guidance of Mexico Beach. We've had lawsuits in the past that came up. We actually sent a letter that's supposed to be over there at the county on that the people aren't allowed to just walk in and do this. So, we can monitor that. That's what I'm talking about, if it's a, and I, it's been a little, it's starting to get challenged a little bit. If it's a platted lot, and, and it's in certain neighborhoods. Some of the lots and neighborhoods were just platted bigger than other neighborhoods. And we wanted to keep that integrity of that neighborhood. So, years ago, people went in there before rules were brought up and they, they did split the lots. There's some bigger ones and, you know, hey, it, it, it worked. But it didn't work, the neighborhood was originally platted as bigger lots in the neighborhood. What I'm saying is that's kind of, we've had some applications come in. So, what are we gonna, that's where we have to put something in the LDC to give him the guidance on it.
Part of your concern is addressed, and again, this is a longer paragraph, 307, 307.00. But it goes on to say, a little further down, "Lots created by lot split or subdivision of an existing lot in a platted or unplatted residential area is owned residential general or residential low density shall be no more than 10% smaller than the median size of all lots located in the subdivision on the same street or neighborhood as originally platted in a recorded or unrecorded plat and no less than the minimum lot size sufficient to meet the development design standards in the code."
Yes.
That is in your code.
That is what's starting to be challenged. How far out, that's something, I'm just telling you, we're getting off in something else here. We've gotta give this, this is a state statute, but these things that come out, we have to write the, what I was getting to, the LDC, we can call it LDR, has to be concrete and we're under review process, but this would be something that needs to probably be
We can turn and look at that.
brought more to the forefront. Because I've had it, I've talked to powers that be. And what are you considering? The, the parameters of the 10% rule? How far out are you going?
Well, exactly.
To do that, and that's not what it was supposed to be written.
But Jason, I think the zoning kind of takes care of that because in boundaries of neighborhoods, people can make those as big or as small as they wanted to. But if you're in a neighborhood, we'll say, with .2 acre lots, by definition, what, what Tim just read there, you can't take a .2 acre lot and split it and have two lots. It won't fit.
It won't be density, density.
It won't work.
Okay. Let's, let's back up a little bit here. Let's go ahead and, should we have a motion to read the resolution? Let's get through that and then we'll move on to some more discussion.
I have something. Before we start, we, we did receive emails from, you know, the citizens.
Correct.
Uh, requesting that we not read at this topic table at the next meeting so that they can, we can get more citizen involvement. Because, you know, the governor has created this special bill, um, like Tim said, he doesn't exactly know why. But it was created, but yet we're not, you know, we're cutting, you know, no public hearings, no city council involvement, no P and Z involvement. So, it's everything is pretty much to that one person, which we would assume would be our city administrator. But a lot of people are upset by that. I'm wondering if maybe some of the cities, including our city, have we communicated with the governor's office to let him know that, you know, we're, we're not real excited about this? Um, you know, it, this is something that's just forced on us and we're not really in favor of it. And, you know, since we're hearing from the citizens that they would like us to table it and get more citizen involvement before we do any readings on this.
City Attorney. By state law, we have obligation to do the reading on it.
But by state law, you have to designate somebody, some department to get the application for plat or replat and somebody to actually approve it. You have to do that, it became effective July the 1st. Whether, whether anybody likes it or not, that's, that's a different story. But, but if, if the city is presented with a plat, we've got to comply with the state law and you've got to designate how that's gonna happen. So, if the law changes, you can pass another resolution to change the resolution uh, that says who's gonna do what. But, but at this point in time, as of July the 1st, you now have an obligation to designate the department and the individual.
So, with that, so with that said, it, um, we need to get a motion to read the resolution, open it back up to discussion, and we'll take it from there. Is there a motion to read Resolution 2504?
I'll make a motion to read Resolution 2504.
There's a second? I'll, a second. A motion and a second, take a roll, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Pisagie?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Resolution 25 dash 04. Resolution of the City of Mexico Beach, Florida, designating an administrative authority for the receipt, review, and processing of all plat and replat submittals and designating an administrative officer for issuing a final administrative approval of a plat or replat submittal and providing for conflict separability and an effective date.
Okay, with that, uh, resolution read, can we open to the public? Any other comments from the public? Get to move back to.
I would like to offer an example to illustrate why I'm concerned about this. It's been, my actual subdivision has been in front of the council and P and Z many times because of our lot sizes, people coming in and wanting, people who own the lots wanting to split them. As Jason pointed out, the city was platted in certain ways. And I have an old plat map at the house that shows from the south side of 98 to the south side of Florida, the lots were platted as 50 feet wide in 75 to 100 feet box. From the north side of Florida to the south side of Maryland Boulevard, the lots were 75 by 100 or slightly larger. From the north side of Maryland back to 50, the lots were 100 feet across and 150 feet deep or larger. That was how the city was originally platted, small, medium, and large lots. The concern is, we have battled for 20 years to keep the larger lots that are 100 feet across, that have enough square footage in them to make two legal lots. We have battled very hard to keep those lots from being split because those subdivisions were platted and we all bought in those platted subdivisions. And we bought the larger lots because we wanted the larger lots. Those have always come in front of, and we called those lot splits. They've always come in front of P and Z and the council and the surrounding lot owners have always been able to voice their opinions. We have never planned any of those as plats because it was to cut them in half. We called them lot splits. But in the case that we just saw, we had lot splits, but it falls under the rule of lot, uh, plats because it was three lots. My concern and the concern of a great many people is that anybody could try to split one of these larger lots. All they have to do under this regulation is walk into Mel's office, say, "I wanna split it." He makes an application and Mel will not have all of the information that he needs in order to make an informed decision, and it will be up to him without the information. And nobody will know about it. The neighbor next door won't know about it until it's already happened. The owner next to me, and here's what happened before I had an argue with, um, a previous administrator and the building department. They assumed that my house and my street was in the neighborhood of the ones on the south side, which backed up to the park. And I pulled out my original plat map, which I got when I moved here, and showed them that my subdivision has nothing to do with the other side of the street because they were saying, "We can split all these lots because these are over here are so much smaller." And my plat map says, "Oh, no, you can't, they're all great big over here." So, the issue is, how do we continue to protect those of us who own the larger lots? And there are a lot of them in the east side, when we won't know if anything has come up that is trying to be divided? And we will have no opportunity to speak on that. That's our concern. And because we've already run into the three lot split on Hatley Drive, I think it's a legitimate concern because you're saying it becomes a plat split when there's three lots. Well, conceivably, somebody could take my lot and split it into three. There's enough square footage, I think. Or you can buy two lots and, I mean, you know, how do you protect us? Because with this, we have zero input and zero knowledge. That's the concern. And we can make this bill more restrictive, can we not? In terms of putting more details in it on who can, who can do what and, and who gets to know and still maintain the same guidelines that it requires? Can't we make it more restrictive?
There's a seven day requirement. Within seven days of receiving the application, we have to decide. So, there's no time.
It, it says to notify the person.
Right, right.
That if he's got documents. And then, it says that you will notify him in a letter of, of the timeframe that you will take to make that decision. So, that's seven days is to notify the applicant whether he's got all of his documents available. Which is why I suggested to y'all what I did. Um, I think it's, it's a grave concern, and I am by no means the only person who thinks this. We are left hanging in the wind, and this will open the floodgates to people trying to divide our bigger lots. And that is, that can't be allowed to happen.
Okay, Nikki, the, the part that I want to clarify, whether it's Mel or anybody else, we're basically going, we're appointing one person, whether it be the city administrator or whoever it is. But along with that, he has tools to use. He has EPCI, he has planning, planning collaboration to make those decisions. I don't think it's a decision that only that city administrator would make on his own. He would make it with some collaboration of decisions. I, I think one of the, one of the things that amazed me about this whole thing is that we, we get final approval as a council for beach vending. Yet, something as important as this, we're gonna pass on. And I'm, I'm frustrated by the state law. But I know I don't have much control over that.
And like I said, I just want to clarify, I'm trying to, 'cause I'm concerned, I mean, we have to designate. It's, that's fine. But where we have the teeth and the control is through our LDC. And, 'cause that is what he will have to follow. That's, that is, that's what we have. And Lisa, whether you be, and I've seen, I know, I'm, same thing with these are, maybe it's just as simple as a word as an originally platted lot and general resident. I don't know what that, but now, it's up to us to give ahead to make sure that our book is how we want it. 'Cause the designee, whether it be him or whoever it is, is has to follow, they do have to follow that rule. The state rule is just you have to appoint a person at a minute, you know, and you have to do it with it these days. I'm not trying, it is what, I mean, it, we have to appoint, so it's already been done. I mean, technically, I mean, we haven't, but we can do it through the LDR and the LDC or whatever you wanna call it. I firmly believe, and, and it was already gonna come up with this 'cause there has been some talks about these bigger lots again. And we need to make sure it's written the way it needs to be written. That they, basically, they should not be dividing originally platted residential and general residential lots from what they were. That's kind of how we put in a 10% thing way back. I don't know what that, but anyway, I'm just speaking. That's our, that's our path. Don't, I, I'm trying to give you, the people reassurance that that's our way of tackling it. This designee of one person is, is something that's been put upon us.
All right, with that said, there any other conversation? Is your motion to move forward with this?
Yeah, so just to maybe tie up, tie this up and evolve. I think what the community is concerned about, and I am too, is transparency, right? I think that's, that's what we want. Uh, the power's been taken away from this council by the state, can't fight it. But, I mean, the, the senate, the, the senate bill says nothing about controlling the narrative or not providing transparency from a local government. I mean, we, we are free to continue what we're, what we've been doing all along as far as notifying the public when a change is coming. Uh, and Ms. Logan emailed us yesterday and gave some, gave some, um, some recommendations for additions to, uh, our LDC. But, I mean, honestly, I think everyone here at the table's committed to transparency. So, but, uh, I don't, I don't necessarily think that anything has really changed now because we've got, we've still got the LDC process. Um, we, this, this doesn't apply to land splits, applies to replats. We did just have a replat at Hatley Drive, and we all, we all remember that. So, I don't know, I mean, I guess, I'm just committing ourselves here to make sure that we remain as transparent as we, as we've always been.
Is there, is there any restrictions that we can put, I'm asking, is there any restrictions that we can put on this that would demand that we get notified by the city administrator? Will you apply that?
Uh, no, I think you can adopt a policy. It doesn't even have to be in this resolution. But, but the second part of the sentence in Subparagraph 2 says, "The written notice must also include information regarding the plat or replat approval process." You all could determine that as a part of the process, you all get notice. The P and Z is involved, you're involved, however you want to do that. I don't think there's any prohibition in the. However you want to do that. I don't think there's any prohibition in the new law that prohibits that. All that whoever is giving the notice has to do is to tell them who, whoever submitting the application, what the process is, including the requirements regarding completeness of the process, applicable timeframes for reviewing. So it doesn't even say you got to finish it within a certain period of time. Approving or otherwise processing the plat or replat submitted. So I don't think there's, you all could come up with a policy that said, okay, any plat or replat has to come into the city, comes in the way the resolution says. But then this is the pop, this is the process we want it to go through within the city.
Which could be the exact same process.
Which could be exactly the same thing that you do now. And then ultimately, the city administrator or whoever you designate is just the one that puts his name on it instead of the five council members.
So is that the answer here?
I, you're not prohibited from this new law in doing whatever you want to do as far as what the process is. Other than you don't get to approve it.
Now, I think, I think we just found our way.
I think, it sounds like.
That's what I want to see in writing, yes.
So do we, is our answer here, we do nothing? Except we have to follow state law and we have to identify the city administrator as our new.
We have to identify the process that we currently do that's unwritten. Is that true, Mr. Kern?
You have to follow the state law. That is correct. And you don't, you don't get to sign off on plats, nor does the P and Z approve it anymore. However, there's nothing that I see in the law that prohibit, it says, "No further action or approval by the governing body is required if the plat or replat complies with the requirements of 177 091." So if somebody comes in and submits a plat before it's determined whether it's in compliance or not, I don't see a prohibition against P and Z or you or whoever you want to be involved in the process. Maybe even the city engineer, and planner, attorney, whatever. And then that information is given to the applicant as to the timeframe of that process and the process. So whatever you all want to come up with, I, I don't think you're prohibited from doing that. You just don't get to approve it anymore.
So with, with, with respect to the state law that is now in effect, what do we as a council have to do today to come to compliance with the law?
The, the, the governing body of the municipality shall designate by ordinance or resolution an administrative authority to receive, review, and process the plat or replat submitted, including designating an administrative official responsible for approving, approving with conditions or denying the proposed plat or replat.
Okay, so, so can we identify, can we identify the city administrator as that person? And then adopt our prior procedure?
I, I, I think you have to do that and whatever procedure you want to come up with and direct the person approving the, the ultimate process. But again, they're telling you that if the plat complies with 177 091, you, you may have a process, but I don't know that you have the ability to say you can't have it. So you have the process, people give input. But if the ultimate decision by the administrative official is that it complies with 077 091, then I'm not sure that, that all of that matters.
But we can at least notify the public.
Oh, that's correct.
To have, there's nothing we can do to stop it. We can still notify the public that this is about.
There's nothing that I see that prohibits that.
And we can also have our parameter. We need to make sure what.
Correct. You all can come up with your policy of how you want that.
What he has to follow or whoever does.
Plat or replat process to be. Recognizing that if it complies with 177 091.
So there would be a prior process through the city administrator that has to do A, B, C, D, E, F, G. He signs it off, gets it to us, and then we go through our process.
Well, he doesn't sign it off. You go through whatever notification and public process you want to go through and then it comes to him for final determination of 177 091. That's correct. So you, you're more of an intermediary staff if you want to do that.
Same thing, he's the ultimate decision.
He, he or whoever is sitting in that role of whatever you designate the administrative official to sign off on.
But that, but our land development code is still going to designate whether it meets that 177 091 or not, right? I mean, it protects people against what Ms. Logan is concerned about. We've already got the language in there about you can split a lot, but it's got to fall within, it can be no smaller, it's got to fall within the 10%. All that still applies.
Yeah, lot splits are, I, I, I don't have time with this, but, but this is plat to replat. So only applies to that.
Yeah.
Whatever else you want to do, other stuff, it's not affected by the new law.
All right, so we've got to move on here. We're basically saying that we want to remain doing exactly the process that we currently do. And that gets passed on to the city administrator who abides by the state law to make that decision.
Right, then you're an intermediary process and he is the final decision maker.
Nothing changes on our front end though. We have our.
Well, it has to come into a department. So this resolution designates your administrative department, which would be your office folks, to get it in and then it's processed. And whatever you want that process to be, he's got to advise the applicant within seven days of what that process is. And then ultimately, if, if that person determines it's in compliance after that whole process, whatever you decide, is in compliance with 177 091, then your process is a nice process.
Okay, so based, I want to ask the city, I want to ask the city administrator, is that somewhat that would be acceptable to you, the way you understand it? If we kind of get what, what we want as citizens and council and then we allow the law on your side?
Yeah, my, my decision is based on does it comply with our laws and the state laws.
Right. But you can provide notice to the public through this intermediary process. It's just, it's just a process, not a final decision.
Correct. Do I have a motion move forward with 2504 based on current process that we use to allow the city administrator to make the decision?
I make a motion we approve resolution 25-04.
That's okay.
But any provisions we have to mention on?
No, you have one reading. That's sufficient there.
Does it take a roll then?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Posey?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Ball?
Yes.
Oh, wow. Okay, we're on number six, which is the J. Better Ward. We're going to go ahead and cross that off because we're not prepared for that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, citizens' comments? Yes, sir, come on up. It's ma'am.
Julie Gardner, Mexico Beach. Just wanted to remind everybody about Friday at 4:00 PM Central. I'm sure I probably beat you to it, my error.
I blocked it off.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just knew it wasn't on the agenda and I just wanted to make sure everybody that was watching remembered that Friday at 4:00, we are honoring Mr. Owl and the pier dedication ceremony. And we would love for anybody that walks to, to come and attend. There will be a tent and top notch golf carts will be running. Two golf carts up and down the road to shuttle if you have to park further away and can't walk. Those guys will be, those two carts will be running to help get people back and forth. We will have some chairs, but if you come and you have a bag chair, you might want to bring it because we do not know how many people will be coming. So we would love for you to attend. Please be there.
Thank you. And Julie, the location will be at the.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, on the flyer, I did put Pier Road because I'm just so used to calling it that, but it is 37th Street, the old location of the pier and the new location of the new pier when it gets built.
And then the citizens' comments.
John Harold representing the special events committee of Mexico Beach. I guess I got to remind you first, it's not too early to start. Turkey Trot's coming up Thanksgiving. That is our third fundraiser for the year. And for those at home that don't know it, special events committee's whole purpose is to raise money for the fireworks. This coming year, 2026, we normally have the Gumbo Cook-Off, which is our kickoff fundraiser. The President's Weekend. That Saturday is Valentine's Day. So we have decided not to have the Gumbo Cook-Off on Valentine's Day because we've had several vendors say they would not be able to participate in our event because Valentine's Day is one of their biggest days. So we are moving the Gumbo Cook-Off with the city's permission, of course. And hopefully we can have it at the boat ramp again because it had a wonderful turnout last year. February 28th, two weeks after Valentine's Day to get everybody, get rid of all the toxic chocolate that's in your system. All like that. We also are letting everybody know right now fireworks are going up minimum 10%, maybe as high as 30%. We have to wait and see. Our contract is coming after Labor Day. It'll be a minimum 10% with a rider because we don't know what the tariffs are going to be on fireworks. It changes every other week. So we're going to have to raise some money for the fireworks. We wanted to plan something extra special. It is the 250th anniversary of our country in 2026. So we're hoping to do something a little more elaborate. We'll have to find out what the tariffs are, what the money's going to be and how our fundraising goes. We will be having further announcements for our vendors because if we don't have the cooks, we don't have the Gumbo Cook-Off. And that is our major fundraiser. We are raising the, the prize money. We'll be doing other things, hopefully to, to raise money, raise awareness so everybody at home. I was hoping the crowd would stay, but y'all ran them off. I don't want to say about that. This is very important, so I'll be coming up here from time to time just to remember everybody. And you can go to our Facebook page. We do have a Facebook page. And it will tell you, we can take donations all year. We don't have to wait till the fireworks. Field box 631, Port St. Joe, please. If you feel like donating $10, $100, $1,000, $10,000, please. We're not biased. We'll accept it, okay? Because our, our goal is to have the best fireworks where people come from all over, from Weewaw and everywhere else to come see our fireworks. So we want to, we want to have the best weekend this coming year. So that we're just starting to put the word out. Did I figure anything, Ms. Logan?
Well, we had also talked about maybe the need to have an additional special event to raise more money. We talked about.
Yeah, but we, yeah, but I thought we were wrong.
Well, we had one suggestion possibly, which we have not spoken to Sandy about. Memorial Day.
This is coming, this is coming from her.
We thought it'd be so bad in our city that could be a special events fundraiser. That would help with the, you know, possibility of the fireworks going up maybe as much as 30% because of the tariffs. And because we want so much to make it special for the 250 year anniversary.
I'm sure public works will help.
Oh, but we were thinking the fire department because, you know, y'all can cook it and we could sell it, the whole but, you know, just a thought. As an additional special events thing.
Okay, I, I think that's all I had.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
No, thank you for your attention.
All right, council comments?
I have two. Budgets have passed for next year. We have a line item for a, for a grant writer. I think we have a lot of excitement around this table as well as the community of hiring a grant writer and having him or her get to work. Can we start the job search now before October 1st? Like just start posting, posting the petition, collecting resumes, doing interviews? And we don't actually pull the trigger and have a hire date until October 1st? Can we start that now?
Well, there'd probably be a consultant you're looking for, not a full employer. So we could go out for RFQs and submit that, see what we get for replies. So we can start crafting that document.
Okay. Counsel be all right with that?
The budget's not eggs in stone yet.
That's right, so that, that's actually my second question. So obviously at the last meeting, I was not present. I know the budget was passed three to one. But there was also a two-two tie on a particular line item about Canal Parkway Roundabout. So I'm prepared to reopen the budget if there's interest around the table to break that tie. I, I'm not sure about the protocol. Is there?
Protocol's a two-two vote, so it has to be open by positive votes. I guess the S is.
I know we were having another meeting.
Yeah, and it was brought back for a 30-day thing, so the next meeting then would be the 30 days.
Okay. So we can bring it up. So we, we could bring it up at the next city council meeting. So that'll be the day before the budget has to be.
September the 9th, right, is it? Yeah.
The next day at 5:01, we have to have a meeting to declare our budget, right?
Correct. You listen to the meeting though and clarification we've already done as a council?
Yeah.
Okay, we're in happy with that.
Well, I didn't say that, but I, I, I wanted to, so the reason I'm bringing this up is I think we all know that we, we've got an opportunity to lower the millage rate even further. It may not be a full court point, but we all got our proposed a next year's tax bill in the mail probably by now. And we see that, that the other line item, the property tax, they're, they're not round numbers like ours are. The county's, county's remains unchanged, but it doesn't seem to me as though, maybe it's been tradition around here, but we, we've been holding our millage rate at, at quarter percent intervals in the last few years. There was, there was one year that council decided to go 5.99. But I mean, if we, if we decide to eliminate another line item from the budget, we don't have to drop it to five and a quarter. We could drop, we could crunch the numbers and say, well, okay, our millage rate this year is 5.364 or whatever. Just want to gauge the interest if.
And we, we can discuss that in Monday night meeting and get that's here.
Also keep in mind that you've already had a vote to keep the millage rate at 5.50. So if you're on the losing end of that, constantly bring it back for another vote till you find more votes. It's not come do it with Robert's Rules of Order.
Well, that was the tentative.
That understood. That was a no to the city number.
Yeah, you, you're.
That's all right.
I want to jump back up. I skipped staff comments and so if you had any of it.
That's okay, Your Honor. Been a long meeting, so. But.
Been a long 73 years.
I just wanted to point out that Public Works did a good job of installing some Mobi mats at the end of Canal Parkway. And I have never set foot on a Mobi mat in my life, you know? You'd think that setting a, a mouse to a blanket over sand would still be spongy. But I was surprised at how solid that, you know, thing really was. So keep in mind that that is available now. That will not get you to the water. We don't have enough mats to go that far, but at least you can get, you know, where you can get a good view and that sort of thing. So for those of you who need that Mobi mat, it's available now. Last thing is I wanted to say something really quick about the pier. You know, the, the dealing with FEMA is, I don't want to say it's unpleasant, but it's not pleasant. Because they, they take so much time to review things. They just want to shake your head and when they say, well, we can't do that in another six, seven months, it's like, why? But nonetheless, I did want to dispel one rumor because if you look on social media and the things we get really out there, and it's not the photo of the people making the comments because they just don't know any better. So I just wanted to say a couple of things about the pier in that keep in mind that FEMA had originally said that the cost of the pier. FEMA had originally said that the cost of the pier should be seven-plus million dollars. So they're looking at that type of figure now. We went ahead and did the bidding process to establish what that figure actually is, and if you've seen the results of the bids, you know, we've got a couple that we're considering, you know, both of which are in the $10 million range. So my question to FEMA on the phone while I had them on there was, okay, what's the possibility of you picking up the difference between the $7 million and the $10 million? And they say that will happen. I said, so what expenditure should the city have then? And the bottom line is, we did have an alternative bid to move the pier out a little bit. That will be at our expense. That's something FEMA will not cover, because they're going to want to put it back to the footprint it was pre-hurricane. If you look at the bids, then that figure is, you know, close to $100,000. So the rumors out there that we're going to have to each individual pony up thousands of dollars of our own money to do the pier, that's not the case. It should be a FEMA project with the exception of what I just mentioned. So, hope that helps.
Thank you. Just glad I don't have the budget for that, myself.
Hey, so I lost $150,000.
Okay, mayor comment? The only comment I have was the renaming of the ceremony at 4:00. We covered that already, I appreciate it. Good teamwork. So, with that said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.